So they started, it's been paid.
Yeah, interesting what it would be.
And they got a good deal.
What if they did a fundraiser, but would it go in?
Usually they give us money.
Yeah.
One would think.
I know, that's true.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Or I should go get them signed. I saw your wife. Tell your wife that she might have stayed around. She might have allowed. Because actually, my wife is an official woman. And she thought, I was the only one like this person. And so they did it to me. And your wife said, I wouldn't agree with him.
That'd be great.
Okay, it's 5:30. If you had all called with the order, if you all stand and join me, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Per our board policy 1120 at the first regular meeting.
Hello, my name is Sandra Jackson. I am a student who is a senior at Kamaike High School. My experience with this school has always been positive.
Speak into the mic.
My experience at the school has always been positive, and I believe that the school district has the best interest for each of their students. I believe the reason that the LBGTQ flag is on the agenda to be banned from the school is based on fear. The LBGTQ flag has struck fear in some groups. I have no idea who or why. Fear makes people angry as a member of a certain group, such as the LBGTQ community. Anger then leads to actions such as the student who doxxed a teacher for having the flag up in the back of the classroom. The action of a student was completely wrong and should have been counseled by the administration. Flags represent many things for many different people. If we ban the LBGTQ flag, should we not also ban, not allow, the Boy Scouts of America flag or team flags, et cetera? It is my opinion that this should be a non-issue. The actions of this Board to ban the LBGTQ flag may signal to students in the community that it is all right to harass students and teacher alike who are different. Targeted harassment against LBGTQ community like doxxing a teacher usually in order to intimidate, harass, or incite public outrage, which is completely wrong and depending on what action and insight could be considered a crime, a hate crime. I believe that schools should be a safe place for all, and the LBGTQ flag offers, as stated by the CDC, those students a sense of being cared for, being supported, and belonging at school, violence harassment no place in any school. The LBGTQ flag should not be considered as a sign to focus on hate. School correctness is when school, the student feels, this is the CDC's documentation, school correctedness is when a student feels that the adults and the peers in the school care about their learning as well as them as individuals. This includes a sense of being cared for, being supported, and belonging at school.
Your time has expired.
That's it?
That's it, yes ma'am, thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Prepar.
Thank you. I would just like to recap. Someone posted a photo of a large pride flag in a teacher's classroom. A few people said it makes some kids uncomfortable. They said they don't need to know these kinds of things about their teachers, and they want that flag taken down. The Board has also heard from members of the community, including students, who oppose policing of flags. They presented statistics about suicide rates in the LGBTQ+ community. They told you about how knowing a teacher supports them and is inclusive is crucial to their well-being. Mr. Valentine and Mr. Galbraith decided we needed a policy addressing the issue. The Board had a study session and charged the administration with making the policy that we saw for first reading last month. Mr. Valentine came up with more language to add to try to close up any possible loopholes and dial in the specific restrictions. He and Mr. Galbraith want this new policy to be seen as a compromise, and that the alternative would be to allow no flags besides the US and Washington state flags. The argument has morphed from the pride flag making some kids uncomfortable to it being a distraction to it being unpatriotic. I want to point out the pride flag does not advertise this teacher's sexuality. Anyone who suggests so doesn't actually know him. He is showing a group of marginalized students that his classroom is a safe place for them. The pride flag does not exclude straight kids. As for it being a distraction, you're going down a slippery slope if you want to eliminate visual distractions in the classroom. As for it being unpatriotic, no one is pledging allegiance to the pride flag, the WSU flag, the Seahawks flag, the FFA flag, or any other flag. All of this just shows how you are grasping at straws trying to find something to make this proposed policy stick. There is actually another option besides restricting or banning flags. Leave the flag policy as it was originally written, and remember that you've pledged liberty and justice for all. The spirit of the policy you want to pass is homophobia, discrimination, suppression, and bigotry. Love is acceptance, hate is intolerance disguised as patriotism and piety. Reject this policy change.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessie Robledo. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Good evening. I'm speaking to you tonight as a teacher and parent who cares deeply about students' kindness and critical thinking. With these values in mind, I urge the Board to vote no on the proposed amendments to Policy 2333. The purpose of the pride flag is to show support for our friends in the queer community living as their authentic selves. In 2022, this really shouldn't be a controversial stance. Members of the LGBTQIA+ community have been a federally protected class since 2014. The continued legalization of gay marriage is supported by nearly three-quarters of American citizens, and recently even the Mormon Church came out in favor of codifying it in federal law. Most major mainstream companies fly pride flags in June with no fear they'll lose customers, in fact, knowing that their support is popular enough to be profitable. Now, arguments have been made that the pride flag might make some students uncomfortable. It would be understandable to feel uncomfortable around a symbol that disrespected one's beliefs. However, all the pride flag does is acknowledge that it's okay for people in the queer community to be their authentic selves. So the only way the pride flag would disrespect a student's beliefs would be if they had a deeply held personal conviction that queer people shouldn't feel supported or respected. Believing that a federally protected class of people is not deserving of support or respect is simply prejudice. Ruling for the prejudice rather than the support of the marginalized is a dangerous precedent, and not one that I want to see in my district. Finally, school board members in favor of revising our policy have claimed that their intent is a learning environment free of distractions. Knowing teenagers, I can tell you that if these kids are told that a symbol that represents their identity isn't welcome in the spaces that they're required to spend their days, you need to prepare for a lot of disruptions and protest. To sum it up, supporting our gay and trans friends isn't controversial to most Americans, and framing it as a controversial issue does nothing but enable prejudice, sow discord, and disrupt our classrooms. I'm here tonight because I want our district to be a place where acceptance and kindness are empowered, and where we value the lives and rights of the marginalized. I'm here because of what's best for our kids. If you are too, you'll vote no on these amendments.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Penny... Sorry, no. No, is it any P-N-O-K-E-S?
O-K-E-S.
Oh, I'm... Good evening, Penny, I apologize. Your handwriting is better than mine if that's worth anything.
Hi, my name is Penny, and I am here tonight to speak to you about the recent issue with showing the pride flag in our school district. But for a second, I want you to imagine what would happen if you did ban the pride flag. Imagine that you are gay or know someone gay, and when you walk into your class, you see that the pride flag is gone. You ask your teacher why, and she says that the Kennewick School Board made her take it down. You feel mad, sad, and most of all, unsupported. You thought that you could rely on the school board to do the right thing. I personally love attending the school district, but that might change. If I feel like there are kids who are unsupported, please vote to not ban the pride flag.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is James Robledo.
I'm speaking to you tonight as a teacher and parent who cares deeply about students' kindness and critical thinking. With these values in mind, I urge the Board to vote no on the proposed amendments to Policy 2333. The purpose of the pride flag is to show support for our friends in the queer community living as their authentic selves. In 2022, this really shouldn't be a controversial stance. Members of the LGBTQIA+ community have been a federally protected class since 2014. The continued legalization of gay marriage is supported by nearly three-quarters of American citizens, and recently even the Mormon Church came out in favor of codifying it in federal law. Most major mainstream companies fly pride flags in June with no fear they'll lose customers, in fact, knowing that their support is popular enough to be profitable. Now, arguments have been made that the pride flag might make some students uncomfortable. It would be understandable to feel uncomfortable around a symbol that disrespected one's beliefs. However, all the pride flag does is acknowledge that it's okay for people in the queer community to be their authentic selves. So the only way the pride flag would disrespect a student's beliefs would be if they had a deeply held personal conviction that queer people shouldn't feel supported or respected. Believing that a federally protected class of people is not deserving of support or respect is simply prejudice. Ruling for the prejudice rather than the support of the marginalized is a dangerous precedent, and not one that I want to see in my district. Finally, school board members in favor of revising our policy have claimed that their intent is a learning environment free of distractions. Knowing teenagers, I can tell you that if these kids are told that a symbol that represents their identity isn't welcome in the spaces that they're required to spend their days, you need to prepare for a lot of disruptions and protest. To sum it up, supporting our gay and trans friends isn't controversial to most Americans, and framing it as a controversial issue does nothing but enable prejudice, sow discord, and disrupt our classrooms. I'm here tonight because I want our district to be a place where acceptance and kindness are empowered, and where we value the lives and rights of the marginalized. I'm here because of what's best for our kids. If you are too, you'll vote no on these amendments.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Penny... Sorry, no. No, is it any P-N-O-K-E-S?
O-K-E-S.
Oh, I'm... Good evening, Penny, I apologize. Your handwriting is better than mine if that's worth anything.
Hi, my name is Penny, and I am here tonight to speak to you about the recent issue with showing the pride flag in our school district. But for a second, I want you to imagine what would happen if you did ban the pride flag. Imagine that you are gay or know someone gay, and when you walk into your class, you see that the pride flag is gone. You ask your teacher why, and she says that the Kennewick School Board made her take it down. You feel mad, sad, and most of all, unsupported. You thought that you could rely on the school board to do the right thing. I personally love attending the school district, but that might change. If I feel like there are kids who are unsupported, please vote to not ban the pride flag.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is James Robledo.
Good evening. Is that good? All right. I'm gonna start with a quote from a board member online. Says, "If one expresses a conservative viewpoint, that person gets persecuted. It's a fact. Yet this board member is attempting to use their political viewpoints to silence others." They said the solution is to remove controversial issues, evoking strong, strong emotion. How's this become a controversial issue when nearly every major corporation on the planet celebrates diversity with a pride flag? Excluding freedom of choice and expression, political divisive, distracting, I guess that's, that's a problem. All this distraction, and KSD ranks in the top 50 of schools, 50% of schools in Washington State, KSD's graduation rate is higher than the state and national average. But this proposal suspiciously looks like the policy drafted in Newburgh, Oregon, in 2021. After the Board in Newburgh was told by their lawyers to scrap the original policy of banning BLM and pride flags, Newburgh passed a new directive which banned all symbols that could be considered political, quasi-political, or controversial. Does this sound familiar? In September this year, the ACLU won their case against Newburgh on the grounds their policy violated the state constitution. One month later, a board member shared this copied policy with the Tri-City Herald. We want to spend the time, tax dollars, and effort, and energy on another loss. We know the ACLU will come knocking. Does the KSD want this to become a major issue? Because it's not an issue now. They love buzzwords, but yet to produce any evidence of their claims. They made the claim they hear concerns from conservative students about flags being distracting, which is ironic. In 1963, George Wallace, governor of Alabama and a segregationist, the same man who stood in front of a schoolhouse to avoid integration, also said integrated schools would disrupt the learning process and be distraction.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tina Gregory.
Religion is a means to an ultimate transformation. Public school boards have allowed religion back into schools, LGBTQ flags, literature, et cetera. Let's allow all religions back into the classrooms, not just one. The true meaning of the rainbow is a promise from our Creator that He wouldn't flood the world again. I am willing to purchase and supply teachers God's promise, Ten Commandments, and appeal to heaven flags free of charge. I'm requesting transitioning back teaching and counseling available for these precious children that have believed the lie that God messed up when He created them. When they have regrets and need to help transitioning back, this is a huge problem. They testify that they chose hormone blockers, castration, and double vaxisemies, and now deeply regret it. They are shunned by their trans communities and disowned. They feel mutilated and wonder why our society let a child make such a life-changing decision. Children are allowed to vote, purchase alcohol, et cetera, but are allowed to mutilate their bodies, all in the name of trans identity. This is a very hard subject, and we need to help. I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I love all people. I hate sin, not the sinner. We need to call out the lies of the enemy. If children are confused, let's help them. Let's not mutilate them. Trans children have the highest suicide rate. They are beautifully and wonderfully made. Our government is trying to legalize euthanization. Soon it'll be an option for these precious souls. We need to show all children that they are precious. Sexual desires need to be left out of our classrooms. I'm asking all of you to stand, stop the grooming and confusion. Most teachers are amazing and don't push these things, but it is proven that the unions do. Thanks again for allowing religion, gay pride flags to fly in classrooms. It's time we enjoy Christian ones too. Soon we'll have hundreds of flags in all the classrooms. Hopefully, none of them will outshine our American flag, the only flag that should actually fly in classrooms. The flag stands for freedom and safety, and thank you all for your commitment and love for our community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Milden.
Thank you. Dan Milden, 1605 South 717, Private Road Southeast, Kennewick. A year ago, in the paper, one of your staff was quoted as saying, "You as a board do not have to take public comment." In your board retreat in January, you all committed to improving communications in the district. In April, you issued that 1431 procedure, the policy affecting the time for this presentation. You went from open discussion and input from the community to 30 minutes total and two minutes for each speaker. For 30 years, we had a policy in this district for this board that allowed open speech, and you'd stay here long enough to hear everybody that bothered to come to a meeting. You have denigrated from that position with your current policy. And I think that little modification that I've presented to you right there, to change the language, would help the community feel like they're being communicated with you. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alia Jackson.
Hello, my name is Alia Jackson, and I am senior at Kamaike High School. I'd like to start off this with the court case of Tinker v. Des Moines. Majority ruled that neither students nor teachers, quote-unquote, shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate, end quote, 1969. Flags are a way of connection and community. When you see someone with a Seahawks flag, you know that they like sports, and you know that they support said team. You do not think of the political aspects behind it. If you also enjoy football, and you enjoy the Seahawks, you will go up and have that conversation and already have that connection with said individual. The saying goes with pride flags. Quote from the Equity of Civil Rights Office, Students' Rights, Gender Expression, and Gender Identity. Gender expression and gender identity are protected classes under Washington state law. In LA's government website, it states that the pride flag has, quote-unquote, "been updated and expanded to represent the intersectional diversity of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit LGBTQ+ communities." Pride flags only show a space, a safe space, for a right that we already hold. You, if you also enjoy football and you enjoy the Seahawks, you will go up and have that conversation and already have that connection with said individual. The saying goes with pride flags. Quote from the Equity of Civil Rights Office, Students' Rights, Gender Expression, and Gender Identity. Gender expression and gender identity are protected classes under Washington State law. In LA's government website, it states that the pride flag has, quote unquote, "been updated to expand, and expanded to represent the intersectional diversity of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit LGBTQ+ communities." Pride flags only show a space, space, a safe space for a right that we already hold as students. It is not, but not only pride flags are at stake. What about flags for world history? What about world language? What about sports flags? What about university flags? By minimizing every flag, you are minimizing questions and seek of understanding. Isn't a school a place to ask questions and learn things around you? This all started because a student dogs a teacher in our community and has led to bullying and harassment. Isn't that what a school board is supposed to prevent? I never knew my rights until a teacher with a pride flag told me. That has allowed me to educate my peers and find more faults in our system.
Aliyah, your time has expired.
Do you mind if I finish two sentences?
Quickly, please.
Don't give people who only spew hate power. Everyone and every community should be equal, and that includes the flags. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Linda Stevenson.
Well, as always, I'm totally off topic, because I'm here to talk about KSD volunteering opportunities, since I know the board is looking at that. I watched the community presentation video from last week, and I wanted to give you my perspective as a KSD volunteer who has logged thousands of hours in various capacities over the last 13 years. Robin said that volunteers are important and valued. That has not been my experience as a KSD volunteer, maybe years ago at the elementary level, but since then, I have been either invisible, barely tolerated, or outright attacked by KSD employees. The Ways to Volunteer slide from the presentation briefly mentioned the possibility of individual volunteers leading extracurricular clubs, but there was a complete lack of information about how to do that, how to make that work. I think that there is a relatively small pool of people to pull from for volunteers, people that don't work, that don't have small children at home, that have the time and the interest. I think you need to focus on truly making those people feel valued and on retaining those people as volunteers. Also, there is another pool of potential volunteers that you have completely overlooked, and that is the high school students of KSD. We started a pilot program more than three years ago, having the Kamaiken students coach the little kids. To date, they have coached at four different schools, elementary and middle. They're starting a brand-new school in January. Even through the COVID year, those kids got online and they coached the little kids every week. To the best of my knowledge, they have never been valued or even acknowledged by the district for their efforts. So I think that you should explore that as an option.
Thank you. Last, Dr. Pierce, Ms. Stevenson, if you would maybe find a few minutes to talk to Dr. Pierce about this, I want to make sure we're following up with this. Thank you. Our next speaker is Virginia Holden.
Good evening. I am a resident here in Kennewick, and I'm here to say that you should also vote no on the proposed policy banning certain flags. Schools should provide an environment that is conducive to learning, and we all learn best when we know we're accepted and when we don't have to worry about facing bigotry or bullying because of our identity. So, the pride flag is one way that teachers can show students that they're accepted, which will make them, will signal to them that an adult is looking out for them. So, you know, if someone is bullying them, the student may be able to go to that teacher, may feel safe saying, you know, "This is happening to me and I, I, it's really distracting." Bullying and bigotry are things that can really affect a student's performance, and teachers being allowed to display a flag to let somebody know that you're accepted here and that you can talk to me is going to remove distractions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Virginia Tomlinson.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking in support of LGBTQIA+ students and their parents, and I have three points for you tonight. The first is that all students deserve to feel safe and supported in Kennewick public schools, period. It's in complete agreement with your welcoming slide, and I quote the slide that says, "It is important for all community members to feel welcome and safe during the board's business meeting." All right? I don't need a specific flag to feel safe, but LGBTQ students, we know that 40, at minimum 40% of LGBTQIA+ students don't feel safe in school restrooms. So, anything we can do to help those students feel safe within a school environment where they're required to attend is absolutely necessary. The second point, in a meeting several weeks ago, we all heard an eloquent teacher from Southridge High School describe the importance of the pride flag in his classroom. And I, I don't, I wish I could quote him because he was so eloquent, but, but the gist of his message was, "The students came before the flag." And because he was the, because he is the kind of teacher that he is, the students felt safe with him and let him know that it would, it would be even safer and could potentially help other students feel safe if a flag were present in his classroom. A, a flag is fabric, and if that fabric can save lives and help students feel safe, put the flag up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Goodwin.
Jason Goodwin, resident since 78, graduate of Kennewick High. So let's talk about opening the portal to lawsuits and litigation. Currently in this district, we don't have a policy on flags inside the classroom. So the right one, consider this, you allow a pride flag, you must allow a drag queen flag. The trans flag, the pansexual flag, don't forget about the straight pride flag. You allow a BLM flag, you must allow what, allow a White Lives Matter flag. What about if the teacher was born outside the USA like China? You allow a China flag, then you must allow a Russian flag. Maybe the teacher is a communist and wants to spread the word of communism. You allow a Russian flag, then what about the Antifa flag? What about a Confederate flag? Maybe the teacher's from the South or supports states' rights. Maybe, maybe a history teacher teaching the Civil War. It has them all over the classroom as long as it's within your policy. Picture that. What about a 1619 Project flag, not teaching CRT? Now define offensive or non-professional flag. See, there's no end to this. You'll have to write a policy that's thicker than a mortgage contract. It's not about a Seahawks flag. Last month, I believe, the example was gaslighting technique, straight away from the actual issue at hand. And so be it if a teacher can't have a Seahawks flag in the classroom. The school district needs to focus on education and not risking my taxpayers' money on lawsuits and litigation, like a teacher getting accused of grooming. Remember pick-a-roll? Teaching the kids history of that beautiful flag, the flag in the classroom that leads to no lawsuits and litigation. Everything's been talked about, it's covered in that flag. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mickey Berry.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Last month, members of the gay community in Colorado Springs were enjoying a night out with friends in what they thought was a safe place. Anderson Lee Aldrich entered Club Q, a gay nightclub, opened fire, killing five and wounding 17. He is now charged with eight crimes along with murder. Teenagers who are LGBTQ deserve a safe place too, like the people that went to the gay club. They need to be safe, they deserve to be safe and secure, no matter where they live, work, play, or play. LGBTQ students are frequent targets of bullying. PFLAG found that 70.1% of LGBTQ students experience verbal harassment, called names or threatened at school based on sexual orientation. Assuring that LGBTQ students have a safe place, free of harassment, by allowing a pride flag in the school is a small gesture of concern for these students.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie, Katie Banta?
So, I feel like it would be inappropriate or like, or, it feels biased to minimize the pride flag or, or to like, remove it, because we all in this community deserve to feel safe, don't we? We ought to deserve, we to feel like we're welcome in our high school we're forced to attend and our other, we all want to feel welcome, and removing that would make a lot, make students not know who to trust, not know who wants them or who welcomes them. Because in my personal experience, when I see a pride flag on the wall, it means I am wanted in that classroom, and that if I have concerns, they're going to be heard and they're probably going to be done. Like, they're gonna actually care about me as a student and not as a statistic. I have full-on like trauma dump to some of these huge pride flags, and they've made, and they've given me some of the best advice I have. Don't move those pride flags, cause, or don't ban them, don't minimize them, because they show, they show students where they are welcome and who they, what adults want them. Because no one wants them, and I'm pretty sure all of you, when you were kids, you had adults said, "We're very open about not liking you, not, not liking what you were doing," being told, "No, don't do that, I don't believe in that." And that didn't feel good, did it? Yeah, so, and when, when I see that, it means that's not gonna happen to me. I'm an adult, it's not gonna happen to you, and if it does happen to me, I have something to tell them. If another kid is being un-okay to me, I, you know, being not-okay, I can tell them, and maybe someone will actually listen to it, unlike in the past where they did not. But that's a different issue. So, yeah, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Well, that's right. Remote callers, we have any remote callers this evening?
Hello, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
They can hear you and you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. This is Pastor Rick Matters, I'm the Episcopal priest at St. Paul's here in Kennewick, and I thank you for the privilege of being able to speak to the board of this great school district. And I speak in opposition to the motion and in favor of free expression within the bonds of mutual respect and love. The starting point for considering the motion to ban rainbows and the flood- Thank you. Pastor Rick Matters, I'm the Episcopal priest at St. Paul's here in Kennewick, and I thank you for the privilege of being able to speak to the board of this great school district.
Mind you turn his mic off?
I'm hearing myself.
I think, yeah.
A little reverb.
Okay, here, so we're gonna let you start over, if you give us one second, we'll get you dialed back in.
If you can turn your own volume down.
It is the safety and well-being of students. LGBTQ students experience a disproportionate amount of bullying at school, and the rate of suicide among student population is higher than average. They are bullied because they don't fit the white, the white, straight majority, and consequently- Okay, let's-
Yes, sir, do you have, do you have a, speakers on?
They don't fit the white-
Turn his own volume down.
They often don't feel safe at school. The rainbow designates a space or a person who is safe and, and who respects them for all, who they are. God's gift of rainbow to Noah in the Bible gives the same message of safety from harm. Safety is a basic- Okay, I just turned off my speaker, I'm very sorry.
No problem.
What would you like me to do?
Just, you can, keep going, please.
Keep going, okay. The rainbow designates a space for a person who is safe and who respects them for all of who they are. God's gift of a rainbow to Noah in the Bible gives the same message of safety from harm. Safety is a basic human need and is necessary for students to learn and to succeed in school and in life. To remove such safety measures would directly cause harm. Please vote no to this motion. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I, I don't know, did they hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we heard you. Thank you so much.
I think only Joe can-
Okay, I'll hang up the phone so I don't confuse things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our comment period. Okay, where are we? Next on the agenda, consent items.
I move to approve the consent items as written.
I'll second.
Perfect. Any questions or comments?
I do have a comment, and it's, it's trivial, but I wanted to ask it. I think in one of the consent items, Tracy, we, you showed a schedule for, you know, years to come.
The calendar.
The calendar. And I, I sent you an email, but I wanted the board to hear my question also. Is it possible to include what we think would be the board meetings?
So what we've done historically is put the board meetings on the, the wall calendar with the art that, that comes out every year, because the, the calendar, that one, it's so little and there's such limited, like, space on it, we haven't, we haven't put them on there. You know, we could, we could, once the, once the board meetings are, are set, because the board typically just approves that schedule at the retreat in, in June, we could, we could update it or put a companion document with it, and then still continue to put them on the big wall calendar as well.
And online.
Yeah, would, would that work?
It, it works. The reason that it came to mind was that we went to a caucus about how to have people be interested in becoming school board members, and one of the things was how much time, or how much time did it take was, and I thought maybe if we showed on a calendar for someone that was looking in year, two years from now, they say, "Well, okay, two times a month, that's not too bad," or, or something like that. But if we could capture some of the way, I'm perfectly happy with that, but I thought I would bring it up, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is superintendent and board member reports.
Okay, great. So I do have an update that is important to share. If the board remembers at the November 9th board meeting, we recognize Native American Heritage Month, and I shared an update on our work regarding the Braves mascot logo and imagery at Kamaiken High School. So just quickly to recap, as I shared in November, we had the privilege of completing the consultation process with the Yakima Tribal Council- with the Yakama Tribal Council last year regarding the continued use of the Braves mascot at Kamaiakun High School with modifications to the imagery and symbols used to ensure that the imagery in use doesn't perpetuate any harmful or outdated stereotypes and and is honoring and respectful to the Yakama Tribe and to Chief Kamaiakun. And this is all connected with the the bill that passed out of the legislature around use of Native American names and and you know, as mascots. So in December of last year, the the Tribal Council passed a resolution allowing us to continue to use the Braves mascot and imagery until January first, 2023. So our goal has been to update and remove and replace all the imagery that the tribe identified during the consultation process by December 31st of this year. And we've been working on that over the past several months. There was a committee to redesign the logo and imagery and to remove the arrow and the feather from the logo and to remove other symbols like the profile and some of the imagery at the school that the Yakama Tribal Council identified as that they find, you know, stereotypical and outdated and not honoring. And our goal, of course, in in having the Kamaiakun name and using the Braves mascot is to honor the tribe. So we've been updating the uniforms and clothing and stationery and signage and all of those things at the school. There's two major projects left involving the gym floor and the field. Also, the casing around the the reader board. And we do get funding from the state to pay for all of these updates as part of the bill that was passed. So I mentioned all of this in November and I said we'd be providing a progress update to the Tribal Council. So last week, Chris Chellin, who's the Kamaiakun principal, and Matt Scott and Robyn Chastain and I traveled to Tappanish. And we were able to present to the Yakama Tribal Council and provide a presentation of the updates to the mascot and the logo imagery, a presentation of a KSD land acknowledgement, which is a meaningful way to communicate respect to the tribe and affirm a positive relationship between the district and the tribe, and a presentation regarding a plan to continue ongoing collaboration with the tribe. So I'm happy to share tonight that at the meeting of the Tribal Council, they voted unanimously to pass a resolution approving the district's land acknowledgement and granting the district's request for Kamaiakun High School to retain the Braves mascot with the newly designed logo and imagery. And in addition, we're working to establish a standing committee to ensure ongoing collaboration around curriculum and relationship building with the tribe. Since time immemorial, curriculum is a state required part of social studies curriculum. And so discussion of that as well as other opportunities and educational events for for kids and for the community. Our goal is to ensure that there's students who are Native American and families who are Native American as part of this ongoing committee. And we did learn that we have some Yakama students. We know that from the data, but we actually met the Tribal Council General Council Chairman whose grandchildren attend our schools and whose family owned businesses here in our community. And so that was great. Mr. Arlen Washeens is the Deputy Director of the Yakama Nation Department of Human Services. And you've met, some board members have met Elise Washeens, who works with Arlen. Because she came and spoke to the board last year as this process was sort of beginning. That's it was a Zoom meeting that she attended at that time. I just wanted to mention that both of them have been very supportive and helpful throughout this whole process. Deputy Director Washeens has offered to attend a board meeting in the future. And so I'll work with the board and to schedule a time where he can come and talk to the board. We're just very appreciative of the Yakama Tribal Council's approval. And we look forward to building the relationship with the tribe. This week, Tina Brewer, who is our Director of Professional Development and Assessment, she's going to be attending the Yakama Nation Education Collaborative Meeting. And Mr. Washeens invited me to attend the Washington State Indian Education Association Conference in April and to participate on a superintendent's panel. So we're just very excited about the continued work with the Yakama and the permission granted for the continued use of the Braves mascot.
Wonderful. Thank you. London?
Hi. So as you guys know, I got to attend the WASDA conference with you guys. And I found it was a really cool and interesting experience. And I got to meet with a lot of the student reps from all over the state. And especially I got to meet the Pasco and Richland reps. And we are working out a time where we can like get together and meet. We're thinking once a month or more than that, just to see what we're doing in our districts and like what has benefited us. And then I got to attend a few of the meetings, especially the ones directed towards the student reps. And Dr. Pierce and I got a chance to hear from the student representatives from the National School Board, which was really interesting. And then some of the meetings I attended covered the post COVID effects on students and mental health issues, along with how we can improve and like rebuild our schools and communities after all that. And then apart from the conference, we had a student advisory meeting, which is where we have our group of students from all the Kennewick High Schools. And our main focus point was on bathroom issues and how to minimize vandalism and lessen damage to our restrooms.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mr. Galbraith?
Yeah, so like everyone here attended WASDA conference, middle of November. Had the opportunity to listen to Dr. Pierce on the radio the other day. So you did very well, by the way. And then I will just share that I hope everybody at this point is reaching out, getting their levy questions answered. That way you have the actual information that you need, whether that's reaching out to the school district. That way you can make an informed decision. We want to make sure you have that information for the levy. The other thing I'll say is I hope everybody sticks around online or in here and actually listens to our discussion on the policy 2333. There's been a lot of talk online and in stuff about banning flags. And I hope you stick around and actually listen to the the discussion and I think you might get a different idea. And then lastly, we had a delay this this last week. I think we sent notifications out at 6:00 AM. But there was a lot of talk on the school board page about kids showing up to practices and stuff at 6:00, before 6:00. They wanted to potentially see if we can get a notification out a little bit earlier, maybe 5:00. I'm not sure what the process is, but if that's something we could look into, that would be great. Because I know there's a lot of kids who are already at school or even walking that didn't get the notification, so.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Can I comment real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you know, typically the call, not always, but typically the calls made before that and it's actually communicated to staff earlier. In this case, I think it was five at 5:00 AM where we communicated it. And then we've waited to communicate to staff and families because people have not wanted to get that super early morning phone call is my understanding. I'm kind of looking at Robin here to make sure I've got this right. But we I can go back and loop back with Robin. Like I said, typically I'm making that decision early, early, early. It's just a matter of when we communicate it. So let me loop back with Robin and see see what kind of we're hearing from people. And we do obviously want to make sure that people get the message soon enough to, you know, not start leaving for their school or practice if it's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If you, I mean, you could just go back to that post and there's a bunch of comments where people are asking about it. So I think it'd be good to. Thank you.
Yeah. I actually have the same comment as Gabe. I just think it's really important that we engage with the community. And I just keep hearing things that we are not discussing. And it's almost like somebody's telling somebody to say something, or I'm not really sure. But like, I just hope you guys stick around and watch the meetings so you can comment on what we're talking about. Because you're talking about banning things and that's not even what we're talking about. So I had a really nice meeting with Mrs. Alfaro. She's a teacher in our district, teaches elementary. She was awesome. I really, one of the things I loved about her was the way she talks and communicates to kids and kind of gives them this self empowerment and and belief and grit. And I just really had a nice, really nice conversation with her. We did the amazing shake. The only problem I had with it was I wasn't there long enough. They didn't need me and they let me go home, but I kind of wanted to stay. Such a such a good event. I just wish that we could do do that with all the schools. Also, I also heard you on the radio. I thought that was great. And I echo what Gabe says about like, if people have issues with the levy, please like communicate what your issues are so we can address them and so we can get it passed. And then, of course, we did visit the WASDA conference. I actually didn't like it. I feel like it's, there's one voice there and only one voice accepted there. And and, you know, I just think it is a very, very one sided organization that that doesn't. I just don't really like it. So anyway, those are my comments.
So. This is for November, so the WASDA Networking Hour, which is now over for this year and will be starting up again when the session starts. And that's a statewide directors group that meets online. November racial equity and social justice meeting. I was at the KSD Getting to Know You November meeting. Robin, help me. Was that technology? No. Yes, technology. Okay. There've been three and so. Sadly, there's only like one or two community members and myself that come. And they're they're online. They've been recorded, so you can watch them online. And I know not everybody can come to those, but if you can't come, please watch them online because there is good information. The 16th through the 19th, I was at the WASDA conference in Spokane. And Ron is now our new Washington State School Directors Association President. And so that's, they are, they go opposite east and west side. And so that is kind of a big deal for Kennewick and our area. I don't know that there's ever been a president from our area, and so I'm proud to have him representing us. I attended the November, one of the November RSD board meetings online and I was only there for two and a half hours. I think they went another hour after that. The Hawthorne Amazing Shake was great. This year I was in the final circle, which I don't like the name. It's called the Circle of Doom. And I felt kind of like like I was causing trauma to small children. But I have to say, these are fifth graders, in case, you know, people in the community I'm listening don't know. They're fifth graders. These kids are like 11, maybe 12. And they could teach all of us something about professionalism, kindness. They're taught how to shake hands, look at you. And this one young man who was in the final three, at the end I said, you know, thank you. It was, I appreciate your time. And he goes, and it was very nice to meet you too. And I thought, how kind and polite and what a great thing that that they are teaching the students there. And those of us who were who were helping out as adults said, maybe we could do this everywhere and maybe we could do it in adult circles too. So they were great. And then there was another KSD Getting to Know You, which was family engagement and volunteers. And then I attended the Hapo, it's not Hapo, it's all the credit unions legislative gathering the other day. And I was able to see Mr. Connors, wife April, who is now one of our reps. And then Brian Sandlin, who is from the 15th, which takes in outer part of Pasco, not the city. And so I was able to meet him. Another WASDA Networking Hour, another racial equity and social justice meeting. And then yesterday was the WASDA advocacy insights, preparing for the 2023 legislative session. And so we went over again WASDA's priorities and then our own district's priorities and talked about, you know, what legislators do what and how we can contact them. And so I will be providing you more information, but you can always on your own, you know, contact legislators, certainly. And then last night I did two and a quarter hours of the RSD board meeting. And I want to make a comment. There was a lockdown last Friday at South Ridge for a long period of time. And I want to give Dr. Pierce and Robin and everybody on admin kudos because I read and I got emails and I got phone calls from parents saying, thank you for the frequent communication. That made a big difference to very worried parents. And so thank you to all of you for doing that. You know, we always say communication is key. But in this case, when our babies are there, that was and and just me as as a board member and as a community member, having those frequent communications was very helpful. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll be I'll be brief. Still think I'm kicking everyone's butt with the book reading.
No, no.
I've read yet another one and have started a new one. And my new challenge goes out to London, because I know she's doing good stuff at the school. But I think I'm beating you, London. We get to talk about it later. And speaking of London, not picking on you, London, but this is actually in praise of you. At WASDA, I learned that several of the student reps has an advisory vote, where you actually get to vote. And I would like to see what we could do to adopt that. Where you get to vote on these issues that we bring up. It's an advisory vote, whereas it wouldn't count towards passing or failure. But we get to hear and see which way you leaned on an issue, a student leaning. And I think that would be very valuable to us to get that point of view. If you don't mind, I have not talked to you about that. So maybe I shared it for bringing it up. But I thought it I thought it came up at the at the WASDA meeting and was received on a positive. I am the WASDA president, therefore Mike is not allowed to say that ever again, that he will not support WASDA. Because he gotta support me, you gotta support me. And I've and I've invited him several times to come up with topics that would make WASDA less left leaning or right leaning or whichever way. So my challenge to you is to come up with some way to help WASDA be better. And next year you come up and, because I know you enjoyed at least one speaker there. And that was me. I spoke at WASDA.
I enjoyed, well, we tried to get somebody right here on this and you guys shot us down. There you go.
No, my answer is that you gotta go WASDA a chance now because I am representing the east side and east side issues. And I can only do that if you give me input.
We're trying to get involved.
All right.
Just got shot down.
No, not shot down. I just thought it.
Okay, there you go. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, again, I also attended WASDA very briefly. I got called home unexpectedly. But did go a couple, couple of interesting meetings. London got to go sit in the large school caucus with me very early one morning, so that was interesting. Again, it's it's a, there's something there for everyone. You just gotta go find it. And I am very sad that I missed the amazing shake this year. I was on the schedule and was just sicker than a dog. So I was out and I didn't figure in the day of COVID, I wanted me coffee, you know, sneezing on everyone. So very sad I missed it, but it really is a wonderful, wonderful group. Other than that, that's all I have.
Mike, one quick thing. Can we also, a big thank you to Rhonda. She was out at, during the lockdown, she was out at the South Ridge complex, out talking to tons of parents there and just keeping them updated with information too. So just kudos to Rhonda for that as well.
And if I if I may, as we're sharing kudos, I want to ditto that compliments to to Robin, to Matt Scott, who was also at the Incident Command Center with KPD. And then Rhonda, who was at the, like the the kind of reunification parent communication center. So we do have a whole incident command system that is deployed when needed. And this was a time where it was needed. And it was a great opportunity for learning, you know, about what went well and what could, you know, be improved. And huge, huge kudos to KPD and to other police agencies in the area for their response and thoroughness. And we've had kind of an initial level of debrief that we did on Monday. And we've got a more comprehensive debrief planned for after the first of the year. KPD will do an internal kind of debrief. We'll do our own internal debrief. And, you know, I shouldn't fail at all to mention the administrators at the school. Who, you know, even Ron Ron Williamson was not actually working that day, but he came back to work right away, knowing, I mean, he was scheduled day off. And but, you know, that's his dedication level is coming back when needed. And the whole administrative team there and their response, as well as the staff and how it was handled. Just it, you know, never something we want to have to deal with. And thankfully, it was not, you know, it turned out. And thankfully, it was not, you know, it turned out fine. Um, but it was a great opportunity to learn, and we've got great, uh, people here who've, um, done an excellent job. So thank you both for bringing that up and letting me, um, pile on to the kudos.
Can I ask a question about that? And we can talk later, um, about doors that don't open in the correct way and they cannot be locked. Is that something that you're talking about? Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Good. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, reports and discussions. Uh, staff will provide reports and, uh, reports and updates following the annual reporting calendar tied to our strategic plan. Our goal is to keep these reports no more than 10 minutes each. Uh, first up is Delta High School.
Okay, so I'm just gonna do a little brief introduction. We've got two annual reports to the board tonight, uh, Delta High School and TRITech. And so, uh, the, uh, principal of Delta High School and the director of TRITech uh, come here once a year to provide, uh, program updates. Just want to highlight that, um, these programs that are available to our students are just directly tied to our strategic goals of all students are engaged learners, particularly this, uh, aspect of the opportunity to access diverse course offerings. Um, and, uh, and our goal of all students ready for their future, um, graduating with a personalized plan. So having the opportunity for kind of specialized learning opportunities is what you're gonna hear, uh, this evening. And I'm very, uh, pleased. I'm gonna start off by, um, welcoming Casey Benyon, who is the new principal this year at Delta High School. And Casey is here to, uh, do her presentation, and then she'll turn it over to Paul Randall when she's done. Thank you for being here. Welcome.
All right, I promise I'm not contagious. I'm gonna take my mask off so you can hear me. It's been a rough couple of weeks for me. Um, so sorry, I also have notes because I got a little COVID brain going on here. So, um, all right, so my name is Casey Benyon. I'm gonna take just a second to introduce myself to you, because I have never been at the Kennewick School District building before to do a presentation. So I am a proud product of the Tri-Cities. Uh, I graduated from Pasco High a really long time ago. And, um, I have worked in the Pasco School District for 27 years. Uh, I worked at Pasco High. I have done everything from time-out room aide, secretary. Um, I've sat, uh, let's see, uh, security. I have been a counselor, and then I was a career counselor, and then I was the extended day coordinator. I spent a lot of time working with Mr. Randall, um, working with TRITech. And I, um, then was given the privilege to open up Chihuahua as a counselor, and then an assistant principal, and then I was allowed to apply for the Delta job, which I am so excited that I have. So, thank you for having me. Uh, superintendent Pierce and, uh, new board president, or maybe old board president? Continued board president, yes, and distinguished board. It is my pleasure to be here with you today. So, first of all, let's see. So Delta's mission. Delta is a small innovative high school, and I'm gonna show you some, some slides about what it is. I think all of you have been on the board for a few years, so you've probably seen this presentation before from Mr. Johnson. So I'll try to make it a little bit different as to, uh, maybe some of the things that you've seen in the past. But is a local STEM collaboration with Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland School Districts. And we are just trying to allow students to be immersed in this rigorous STEM program. And, um, it is just an absolutely amazing opportunity. At the end, I'm gonna invite you over, and I just really want to personally invite you all to come, if you haven't been there before, to come and see what all our, our kids, your kids are doing in the district. All right, so the school opened in 2009, uh, 2014, 15, this new campus was built. It's on Road 100 in Pasco. It is spectacular, and we'd love to have you come by. All right, the Pasco School District is the fiscal agent, so that means they pay the bills. But it looks like you guys have a wonderful working relationship. I know the three superintendents do spend time together. And, um, so I just very much appreciate that, because I can pick up the phone and call them all if I have questions about what is going on. And let's see, so we have six right now, six Kennewick teachers. And students do earn a diploma from Kennewick, Kamikin, or Southridge, um, as a Delta student. This picture actually is of our Health Sciences Day. And one of our presenters was from Sin Fracture Care. And she came and spent the day with our 10th graders. All right, these are some of the other partners that we have around, um, the Tri-Cities. I did just get notification today that we have a new partnership with Perry Technical Institute. And they're gonna offer, um, thousand-dollar scholarships for all of our students who, um, complete a three-course, um, series on, um, office, pre-engineering, and 3D modeling classes. And so I thought that was a pretty cool, um, opportunity that they're gonna provide. Some of our signature events, um, are on this page. I'm sure you're familiar with them. Kids get to go on a lot of field trips. Unfortunately, during COVID, a lot of these field trips didn't get to happen. Um, kids did lots of virtual, um, or had lots of virtual opportunities. We all know that's not the same. But, um, this year we are 100% going out into the world and trying to get our kids as many different opportunities as we can, um, with our partners around the community. And mock interviews are coming up. So if you ever need something to do on January 27th, you could come to Delta and you could volunteer and be a mock interviewer from nine to noon. So make sure you write that down if you have some free time. All right, our student enrollment, uh, you too, yes, you could come. All right. Um, our student enrollment right now, this is what our student enrollment looks like. Um, 405 students. Um, you can see, um, Kennewick has the most eighth gr- or, sorry, ninth graders right now, um, in our building. And, um, oh, it is amazing group of ninth graders we have right now. The, the students are, um, all based on the lottery. And so we have this, um, very anonymous lottery that happens. Um, I haven't seen it yet, because it's gonna happen in February. But I have, um, been told I have to keep a, a watchful eye to make sure it's very anonymous as we do that. We do have a pretty cool opportunity that we, um, last year graduated students with an AA degree. So, um, college in the high school, all of these classes are college in the high school. We have professors that are, um, partnered with Central Washington University. And, um, so kids are earning credit in English, Social Sciences, um, IT, Science. And then these are all the math classes that we offer, which means, um, students are able to almost earn their AA while attending Delta. And then, um, we just have some students that have to do a few elective classes or a few other opportunities at, um, CBC. Most of them are doing them online in the morning, so they're staying right there in our building. This is our demographics by ethnicity. Just a little snapshot of, um, what our ethnicity and our gender. We have a lot of boys running around the halls. Uh, free and reduced lunch, uh, rate, uh, it right now, that's been, so this is 21, 22 data. I apologize for that. It's been really hard to get, uh, 22, 23 data, um, just because the system's a little bit different now with, um, free and reduced lunch being, um, completely in the Pasco School District. It's hard to get those forms. So, um, and then we have about 10% of our students that are served by 504s and IDPs. Um, one of the things I'm probably the most proud of in the last four months that I've been there is this robust advisory program that we have. I don't think any school that I have talked to across the state, I've talked to quite a few people, is doing this much with an advisory program, and it's awesome. And I would love to talk to any school that would like to learn more information about it, because our kids are, our teachers are meeting three times a week with our kids. Sometimes 25 minutes, sometimes 30 minutes, sometimes 55 minutes a week, talking about college and career readiness and getting them prepared for life after high school. And then once a week, every Monday, our teachers are meeting with students, um, for their mental health and talking about character strong lessons. And, um, that is very, very, very powerful. And, um, our counselor, most school counselors are flooded with mental health concerns right now. And, um, I, I attribute a lot of, um, help with teachers and kids having conversations in the classroom to not as much urgent counseling needs, um, in our counseling center with our counselor right now. So it's definitely working. All right, so these are the class of 2022, the pathways. It's, it's working to have kids over at Delta in STEM careers, because 32% of them graduated and said they wanted to continue on with STEM careers. The next highest was our Health Sciences with 15% of our students wanting to go into, um, Health Sciences. So it's working. We're getting them engaged and keeping them engaged in sciences and technology and math. Uh, let's see, so this is our graduation rates. Um, this was seniors, 97% on-time graduation rate. 28 of those kids, uh, last year were from Kennewick. Um, they earned $2.6 million in scholarships, and 79% of them went on to higher education. So, um, that's the grid of where those students said they were going to go to after high school, which is, which is a real success. And right now is the time to apply for the class of 2027. So if students or parents or people are interested in finding out more information about Delta, we will be, um, attending all, uh, middle schools in January and, um, take a, a group of students with us to talk about all the wonderful things that go on at Delta and giving kids the opportunity to talk about, um, or to ask questions about what it's really like when they're there. And then on February 1st and February 2nd at 6:30, then we start having parent nights so that parents can come in and ask those questions also. And then we give tours. So if you have more questions, all of our information is on our website. And just again, it's a privilege to meet you all and to get the opportunity to talk with you today. And if you have any questions, yes.
I don't know what the, I don't know what this Delta mock interview is.
Oh, okay. But you'll come?
I mean, yeah. What is it? I don't know what it is.
It's an opportunity for you to interview our students. So they will provide resumes and.
As if they were like applying for a job or something like that?
And will provide the questions to you so that you know what to ask. But then you'll do a rating form and just help us with some constructive feedback on what, how their interview was. So, and you could come for an hour, you could come for two hours, you could come for, you know, the, the whole time.
So it's one day for like that block of time?
Correct.
You said, what time did you say it was?
Uh, nine to noon.
On the 27th?
Yes, January 27th.
Okay. Um, just really quick, one, your graduation rate is fantastic, and you literally are close to 100%. You've got, you've got the two, so congrats on that. My question is, just looking at the enrollment numbers, um, ninth grade's 130, just to round up. And then 12th grade's 80-ish, so there's that drop. Do students just go back to their home school through the course of the years, be, for one reason or the other? Is that, is that what the drop?
I'm gonna attribute.
Is attributed to?
The, the big drop in COVID. Um, I mean, those, those couple of years were really, really hard on kids. I believe a lot of students went back to their home high school to do online learning or went to online learning platforms when they just didn't want to go back to regular school.
Gotcha. So it's not normally that big?
I've been told that's not normal.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna jump in here real quick. So, it, so is the 120, 128 students for, for freshmen, is that, is that a more normal enrollment number?
We did that this year to, to help, yes, boost those numbers. And so, boy, is that a lot of ninth graders running around our campus. But yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes.
Um, no, that was the same as Gabe's.
Ron?
I'm good.
All right, well, thank you. And now I'd like to invite Mr. Randall to come up. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Oh, I should take my hat.
And I've had the good fortune of working with this meeting for a long time. It has been wonderful. Oop, there we go. So I'm here to, Paul Randall, talking about TRITech. I always like showing this wonderful picture. I was telling somebody the other day what a wonderful new addition and how more attractive it is to come to, to school. It doesn't look like a warehouse anymore. So I always, I show this off. So, as you remember, last year, TRITech is a school of choice. We serve juniors and seniors throughout the region, eight different school districts. Um, Kennewick is the host, just much like what, um, Pasco is to Delta, the fiscal host, policy host. We are a branch campus of every single high school. Those students, they sign up, they come to TRITech. Our enrollment period's a little bit after, uh, uh, Delta's enrollment period. And the programs serve, uh, students who are on track. We have sometimes a GED student or, uh, two. This year we have no GED students. Um, and we offer a summer-type program in 14 days in length, very high energy, they earn a half a credit. And we've been around a long time, 1981, a long history of success. And that success is attributed to the support of the school districts. These, this year we have 19 different programs. They're all preparatory, career, and technical ed programs. Uh, we provide very relevant and contextual learning, and it's application-based. What they're learning at their high schools, they are going to come and apply the English, the math, the science at TRITech. Um, the facilities replicate what the work site looks like. When you walk into our diesel tech, it looks like diesel tech. When you walk into our firefighting, it is a fire station. Um, uh, we have industry-standard curricula. So the students are learning what you would learn if you had to graduate and you went out to community college or you went to work in the, in the workforce. And our mantra is, "What would your employer say?" So when I think about the ninth grade boys running around, you get to say that quite a bit. What would an employer say? They don't have it figured out yet. But we couch that, uh, discipline and their behavior, "What would your employer say?" Um, we're a shared-time tech center, and so half their day at their sending high school, half their day with us. And so we have two sessions right now. Um, our current programs, uh, are, these are the current programs that we're working on. The, the role we play, um, we help students strategically plan for their future. So as the junior or senior students are working in high school beyond plans, they're kind of thinking ahead. Um, they've participated in the advisories in their various different high school. Um, and if you notice right here, that second bullet down, the smaller font, I was trying to convey the significant opportunity for our students today. And looking at the workforce projections, specifically around skilled, um, trades, skilled nurses, um, computer sciences, our kids are going to do fantastic, because there is a rich opportunity for them in the workforce. Retirements, I, the graph is going up like this for need, and retirements, and the available workforce is going like this, so it's gonna be awesome. The tipping point is about 2024 for some of our skilled trades, welding, pre-electrical, construction, where there is gonna be more need than we can believe. Um, we are a capstone for all of our high schools. We are offering that really expensive-type programming for, uh, that couldn't be offered sustainably from, at a high school location. Even Chihuahua, the largest in the state, most years couldn't offer year in and year out what we are able to offer. Um, it's rigorous, it's relevant. Um, the connectedness to the business and industry advisories, every single one of the programs have business people on an advisory that provide input to us three times a year. Helps us steer the program and keep us on track. Um, and every one of the kids, the last bullet there is they come out with a TRITech employment portfolio. The examples are these internships in clinicals, dental assisting, uh, pre-nursing, or pre-physical therapy internships. They're getting teed up to go out, starting in January. Automotive, automotive and diesel, they're paid internships during the summer, second part of the, uh, semester as well. And then a new program with Cadle, Providence Health Center. How do we, um, place art pre-nursing students in a career pathway during the summer? We call it an externship. It's sheltered, and we shepherd those students on to the workforce at Cadle. Um, resident firefighting placements at, uh, regional fire districts. We have construction trades and pre-electrical. Got a wonderful email from one of our local, local electrical contractors today saying, "I really like these two kids that are working here and they're current pre-electrical students. They're shadowing, and they're saying, 'I like them.' It's a very high-quality student you're sending me." So that was just music to not only the teacher and my, our ears. It was fantastic. And then we have Career Connect Washington, career launching programs, which are third-party endorsed and recognized, um, paid internship opportunities for those, uh, students. So examples of our industry-recognized credentials, OSHA 10, OSHA 30, licensure for certified nursing, American Culinary Federation, and then the college credit. American Culinary Federation, and then the college credit part of it. Since for twenty-plus years, we've been offering CTE dual credit or college credit. And if you think about the, not only the money, but the time the students save and enter the workforce sooner, that's really good for our economy, our local businesses, our, we get moving faster and quicker. And this is over six million dollars saved in tuitions. It's absolutely fantastic. Demographic data this year. So you can see, one column is 2021, that was last year, 2022 is this year. We're up across all of our sending districts and it's wonderful to see that because last year was not so good. COVID was bad on Tri-Tech, for sure. And so from eight hundred and fourteen to nine hundred and seventy-eight kids, that's fantastic. All of them are teeing themselves up to a really good career. And so gender, you can see here, we're, we are almost mirroring what you saw Ms. Minion's presentation, that fifty-three percent male, forty-seven percent female. Ethnicity, forty-six percent Caucasian, forty-eight percent Hispanic. I was in a presentation from Columbia Basin College last week and we mirror almost to the percentage what the community college is. And this is both from just last week's data. Special populations, eight hundred and ninety kids have no designation either special ed or five oh four, about a hundred and nine kids or eleven percent have a special ed or designation, and then about twenty-one kids have a five oh four designation. Focus areas for this year, connecting with our families. This is October sixth. We had absolutely fantastic engagement opportunity with all of our parents. If I could show a video, there was almost five hundred moms and dads and kids at that event. And the weather was perfect. And I would be remiss not to talk about my colleague, Ms. McKinney, who she's awesome and pulling this stuff off. And I look at this young little man in the middle, in the blue, and I say, that's our future. And so the families are coming out, they're learning about what their students are doing. They're also seeing what could be for them. And so I just loved it. It made me happy. Expansion of worksite learning, looking at the projections, it's a wonderful picture I'm seeing out there. And so we, this is our construction trades program. The picture here, that's Senator Sessler. He came down to take a look at what we were doing with Habitat for Humanity. We built over eighty-six homes now in our community in partnership with Habitat. And he thought, that's pretty cool. And so we all went and chummed up with the senator and took a picture. He was happy that day. And so out of the nineteen different programs, eighteen of the programs have robust work site learning components. And we're really focusing on how do we pair kids with employers to get them to work now? And so, and tee them up when they graduate, June, they're off and running. We're finding that parents and kids are much more savvy consumers. They're thinking, hmm, I can go to work, my employer can pay me, and I can have them pay for my education and not be saddled with student debt. That's a significant change in our population. They're thinking about where they're going next. Tri-Tech East, Building C, we're working on that right now. And this is the conceptual drawing. The last time we talked about it was last year in February. It's what it looks like in kind of what they thought it would look like. Not very fancy, but very functional. And pre-electrical, pre-vet tech will be housed here because of growth, to meet some growth. They're both busting at the seams, very close to what we shared with you last year. This is what it looked like last week. So as we all know, think about a house when you start framing. Today, if I went out there and took a picture, all the walls are up, she ready to go. The twentieth is when the roof gets put on. So I should have took a picture tonight, but I didn't. So that's what it looked like. So very simple, basic building, but it'll be very useful. So with that, thank you again for the opportunity of love sharing about the school. It's been, you know, I think it's fantastic. And so any questions or comments that I could answer?
Yes, Gary? We got a lot of great programs at Tri-Tech. Have we ever had, thought of, or is it even possible to maybe have a teaching program?
So we have an early childhood ed program, which is not only do they earn their para-educator type of training preparation programs, but up to about third grade, those students are learning those skills. We're in college credit at CBC, they get industry certifications. So with that, we've got, I talked to the teacher today about a young lady who's a Kennewick School District, a young lady who's in our ECE program. Kennewick School District is standing up a teacher bridge program with WSU. Well, that's a one, two, three punch for that kid. She's getting practical experience with real preschool kids, three-to-five-year-olds in our community preschool. She's learning how to develop lessons. She's earning college credit that'll move her that much faster along. And with this WSU bridge program, that's like win, 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 win. It's awesome. Yeah. So we're partnering with the Kennewick School District out there.
Gotcha.
Any questions?
I have a question. We experienced a great experience, I think it was pre-COVID, where you had pre-vets students do a dog wash. And it was, they did a great job. And it was good to see those kids really enthused and they treated our dog like gold. And is that coming back?
It is. Yeah. And I go back to, here we go, this is where you'll be. So I'll be on the backside of the campus. They will run the, what did they call it? Happy Tales? Or I can't remember. It was a very clever name. So it's coming back.
I was at the family gathering and I was there before it started and stayed late. And the families, a lot of them were families of new students, but there were a lot of returning ones. But what was kind of cool because a few new families were asking questions and parents of students who were now going to be seniors are going, oh, oh. And they were answering those questions before the instructors could even answer them, which was, I think for the parents of the new students was like, oh, it's not just this teacher who wants to make their class sound good, which they are all great. But it was a parent saying, my kid got his OSHA-ten, my kid is now working at a restaurant, et cetera, et cetera. So that parent component was so visible, I guess, there that night. And there was one little girl who wanted to be in the fire science because that's where I was. And she's pretty petite. And her dad said, I really don't think she can do it. And Nate goes, oh, yes, she can. And he was, you know, all the different reasons that she can. And he said, and maybe she'll decide not to do fire someday. That's her choice. But she will learn all these things that move on to other pathways. And the parents were just blown away by that. So kudos to staff for thinking outside the box where our kids may go. They may not stay there always, but they may go to other things. But your parent connection was fabulous and so I appreciate that.
I just want to give a quick thanks to Paul as well because we, as part of our inaugural State of the District Community Partners event that we held in American Education Week's kind of honor, we did a virtual visit to Tri-Tech. And so it was really cool, Paul. London was there. He was, we were able to like zoom into Tri-Tech and Paul walked around and showed us different programs. And so the people who attended our event could actually, you know, see for themselves what Tri-Tech is all about. And so it was great. So appreciate you doing that very much. And thank you, Casey, as well for being here tonight.
The most important thing is I didn't trip when I was walking with my cell phone.
That's true.
This is not a skill I have. I totally get. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the 2021-22 financial closeout. I see Mr. Roberts is going to join us.
So yeah, a couple of positive upbeat presentations, Delta, Tri-Tech. So I'm gonna try to not bring us down here. I'm gonna try to make it sound as good as we can. So you've seen the enrollment charts before, and this is just the final one here for 2122. We discussed this and we were down a little bit here from budget on the elementary, one hundred and seventeen, and then also with middle school and high school down there. And Endeavor, the online, that was up. But overall, down in elementary, high school, middle school, about one eighty-five. And then some of the other programs down here. See, Tri-Tech, Paul didn't mention he had a tough year and that was down from budget. And, but it is up this year quite a bit. But the good news is the state gave us stabilization money. They pretty much covered all this lost enrollment. We'll touch on that in a couple more slides. Then you can focus here on these two columns here. These are without the ESAR and stabilization funds. So this is the budget that was adopted with no ESAR, no stabilization. And we didn't know about the stabilization until later last spring. So, you know, the budget here, two hundred and seventy-three million, two hundred and eighty-three point six million expenditures. And then we had, you know, revenue was a little short of expenditures and that was the adopted budget. And then the actual, and this is again, no ESAR, no stabilization, we came in close to budget here, two seventy-three, and then a little bit under the budget on the expenditures. So we had, some positions weren't filled and you can see the employee benefits was a lot lower there. A lot of classified positions weren't filled. It's just been tough to fill positions and it continues to be difficult even this year. So that came in a little lower and looked a little better than the budget. And then you look with the final with the ESAR and stabilization right down here, eleven point four million of ESAR and then three point five million of the state's stabilization for various, you know, lost revenue sources there. So two hundred and eighty-eight point eight million versus two eighty-one, and that was to the positive. Some money did go to Tri-Tech. That helps, Tri-Tech's money in the general fund transferred to help build that building. Another one point five million's going to be transferred this year from Tri-Tech funds. But generally, we had talked about being around fifty million. When we did the budget in the spring, we said we were trying to pull down ESAR money, get that up to about fifty million. We know we're gonna have to need that money this year and next year as the levy failed to the tune of about thirty-four million over two school years. So that helps us, you know, get positioned to kind of handle that along with the ESAR money. And then you do have, I left some copies there of this here. And this is the detail of a lot of information that I'd recommend you go through. It's the annual, we do this every month, but this one definitely you might want to peruse through it when you have a chance. And we'll give you more details on the numbers. And so down here, forty-one point six million, just one point, that's the non-staff cost, your supplies, materials, some capital outlay there, a little bit of travel. So the next slide is basically by program, revenue associated with the various programs. The top part here is your local basic ed funded. And you see the levy and levy equalization from 2122. And for 2223, these numbers are down to about twenty million versus the thirty-one million. So special ed, normally that's in a little bit of a deficit. We had some safety net money, about three hundred and fifty thousand. And there were a lot of positions not filled. So that almost came out to break even. And transportation's one that I think that's on your legislative priorities. That's generally not fully funded. And you can see there, a little deficit there. And then the programs below, most of these programs, it really should be not in the negative. They should be positive. These programs are standalone programs pretty much. So they're supposed to fund themselves. And this money here is some of the overhead. You know, we can take overhead for payroll and business office and various departments. And that helps offset some of the loss up here. And when we do the budget, that's another piece of the budget where that money comes in to offset some things. And some of this money turns out to be the carryover. A program will keep that money by law. We have to set aside that money that's not used and they can use it the following year. So you can see some of those programs. A lot of these are passed through at the top. There's Tri-Tech, a little bit there positive. And then our career and technical education and various programs here. And so like I said, we really can't, you know, move that money around too much. It usually sticks right with those assigned programs. And this ties to the numbers on the previous page. Here's the seven point three, the ESAR funding, this fifteen million was used primarily up here to offset some of this. And then that's how we get to the seven point six positive number there. And just to recap the ESAR, nothing's changed here. It's fifty-eight point six million. We had said, projected, we would use twenty million by August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and we've actually pulled down twenty-two point nine million. And we expect to pull down another, you know, ten to thirteen million probably this year. So the breakdown of the fund balance. So there are a few programs here, Tri-Tech, career and technical education, learning assistance, those are some of the monies that, you know, by law, we're supposed to keep with those programs. The big chunk here is just other assigned, you know, stabilization that we'll be using for the next few years on the lost levy revenue in addition to ESAR funds. And you can see the fifty-eight point, fifty-point eight million at the bottom. Then move on a little bit here to 2223. And we do have some enrollment numbers and some projections. So the 2122 actuals here. And then here's budget and what we're projecting. And we should be able to get pretty close. We have about four months of data and usually can project out the next six months. So you look at elementary. So we are up here a little bit. Kindergarten is a little concerning. So last year, we had about one thousand three hundred and seventy-five if you include the MCP. And this year, we have about one thousand two seventy-five. So it's about a hundred down. And normally, we like to see about fourteen hundred kindergarten students. So hopefully that'll, you know, be up next year. And some of the numbers here, over budget here on a few things. High school, one thirty-one. Some of these kids are coming from the CTE program. That enrollment down here is a little lower than projected. But overall, we're looking for a little bit of increase over budget at the elementary and the secondary level. And the other programs down below, you can see, Tri-Tech actually is five hundred and thirteen, well above the four twenty-five from last year. I did want to point out Delta. So normally, one forty is what we have there about now. And normally, we're up around one fifty. That's where we like to try to get that enrollment. We pay for about a hundred and fifty slots, whether they're filled or not. So secondary, we'll be looking at that the next couple of months, see how we can get some kids in there. And generally, just a little bit of past history, we do lose freshmen to southwards. Not significant, but kids get there and, you know, sometimes they want to get back to the school, back to their friends and things. So there is a little bit of that. And we usually try to get more freshmen in there than what we actually allocated, knowing that sometimes that drops off a little bit. And then the projected use of the ESAR funding for 2223, and these are just kind of projections, but you'll get a general idea. We still have the online programs, the MCP and the Endeavor. So there's about almost one point five million dollars of staff cost there. The mental health contract, we've added middle school. There's a couple of middle school therapists. So that went up a little bit, about six hundred and thirty thousand for 2223. And we're always concerned about, you know, how are we going to keep that going when ESAR money is gone? So, you know, we have a couple of years to try to figure that out. Tutoring services, five hundred thousand, could be more. And then summer school could be anywhere from five hundred thousand to a million dollars. And there's some curriculum items, some data collection type of software and different things that we've invested in. And there's training, professional development. And then the big one is maintaining staff, about five million dollars there. And then we still have some money or some costs that we will get reimbursed on, over two million dollars of time that we paid staff during COVID where there were rules that they could, you know, use COVID leave and we had to pay to keep them on staff. So that'll eventually be submitted for reimbursement. We are going to look at a few capital project upgrades and improvements, you know, the next several months, kind of looking at that, making sure there isn't any HVAC units that we can. Been kicking around some things with the state to say, hey, is this something that we can, you know, maybe use ESAR funds for? And they're pretty flexible. So it's just a matter of kind of dialing some stuff in, seeing what happens the next couple of months, February, and, you know, continuing to kind of get a list going there. And then curriculum adoption is another one that we could be charging the ESAR, looking at a 2324, maybe doing something a little early with some curriculum adoption and using ESAR money to knock that out for us. So these numbers will change a little bit, but that gives you a little idea. And then next steps here, 2223 budget. So we talked about using the ESAR money, the levy failed, so we were, you know, not filling positions and using some fund balance. But all staff have real conscientiousness But all staff have real conscientiousness about the budget situation and the, you know, the levy situation, you know, departments, teachers, principals. Everybody knows where we're at and, you know, Dr. Pierce has been going out with the importance of the levy and we're trying to get everybody on board. Special education, the enrollment there has increased. Back to that. So down here, special education, budget at 2,400, we're projecting 2,600. So that's a large increase there. And that'll bring in some more revenue, but then that also, you know, we need more staff there. And it's been hard to fill staff. We have a lot of speech language pathologists not filled, a couple psych positions, some other teaching positions. So that's that's been a bit of an issue. Also, another one down here bilingual, you can see the increase here, budget 26, 2765 to 3,000. And last year, here's where we were at. And why that's increased, it's not necessarily that we have new kids. It's that we have students that haven't exited the program. So so you need to pass a test to get out of that program. And with COVID and some new testing, kids haven't exited that program, you know, as quick as as normal. And so we should see that number drop off a little bit once things are back on track with, you know, getting kids passing the test and exiting out. So back to here, transportation funding is one that we'll be interested in. We'll get our final numbers in March. That's when they allocate the money that we, you know, we budgeted this year. But you really don't know your money until March, when you get all these counts that are computed to give us our allocation. And then so we're managing the ESSR funding and the budget to get us through, really to get us through about three, three years. So we've made a better commitment or a greater commitment to use ESSR to get the levy amounts down and to maybe repurpose that funding, bring all that money in. And, you know, we know it expires in August 2024, but if we can bring the money in and then have enough fund balance and things, we can repurpose it. And we've tried to get that levy amount down considerably from what we presented a year ago. And then 2324 budget, that'll start January through May. You know, we're looking forward to the February vote that impacts the budget for the next couple of years. 2324 enrollment, general enrollment, not a big, we're not expecting any big increase there. We noted special education, should see some increase there. There's a phase two of the social emotional learning funding. And there are some committees going on now about, you know, counselors and things and how can we, you know, make some impacts there. Legislative session starts January 9th, ends April 23rd. And that's, they're working on the biennium budget. And that's normally when, you know, that's when the big hit stuff comes, the big impact of funding for schools. So we'll see how that goes. A lot of the funding has had more compliance or more strings attached to it. So we like it to be a little more flexible. So when you're talking to legislators, we don't like it tied up to the point where we just can't use it in certain areas. And we mentioned that ESSR funding is going to continue to be used in the next couple of years. So that's where we're at. Like I said, you have some some information there, some more details. There is a, also a sheet there that talks about the the non-staff cost. It's this big sheet, and I'd recommend going through that to give you a good flavor of some of those costs, some of the big items that we pay for. You know, it costs a lot of money, 300 million to run a school, and it's expensive. That's where we're at.
Anyone have any questions?
Vic, on the tutoring for the 500,000, are we, is that being used well? Do we have a lot of?
So I had a monthly bill about 40,000 back in October. So it is getting used a lot more than last year.
Good.
Yeah, I think we have teachers and parents. Everybody's getting a little more educated on that program. I'm pleased that it's moving better than last year.
Dr. Pierce is nodding. We have some updated numbers and usage by school, and I can provide all of that to you.
I just think maybe, because I had somebody ask me about it the other day. I know we put information out there that it's for everyone. And you can probably put it out every day and there'd still be people that might not see it. But I just think we need to somehow get that out there even better because it doesn't, you don't have to have a discrepancy anymore. It can be anybody, and I think people are not knowing that maybe.
Yeah, and I just looked at some some data the other day by school. And it was really interesting to see which schools we're accessing in and things like that.
I'd like to see them.
How about the Endeavor enrollment? Is that up, level or?
It was, let's take a look here. Here's some numbers here from last year, 174. And then right now, we're about, we're projecting 150. But that number did go up a little bit when I looked at December. So I think we're about the same. It's going to be close.
More questions, Rick? If not, thank you so much.
Thanks, Vic.
Okay, next on our list is the boundary process overview.
Mike would not be a, if you can for bathroom break or?
What do we get through this, then we'll do that. Okay, last one.
Okay, good evening. Like Mr. Connor said, I'm here tonight to give you an overview of an elementary boundary change process. So as you know, one of our district strategic goals is that the district will be innovative, proactive and accountable, and then attached to to that goal. Our annual objectives, you can see a list of the annual objectives there on the top. It says there, we will conduct a boundary review study and process, boundary review study and process to determine if school boundaries need to be adjusted to balance enrollment in our elementary schools. So this map is on our KSD website, and it is a map of our 17 elementaries and then the the boundaries. So you can see like our northernmost school, that boundary is Vista Elementary. On the east side, it is East Gate, although it looks there on the map like it's about to say it was Cascade. The map just doesn't show the boundary. On the west side, the school that's furthest west is Cottonwood. However, Cottonwood and Amen Creek, if the map were to go all the way to the west where the boundary is, are pretty much aligned with each other. And then Sagecrest is the school that's furthest south. And then their boundary actually is the biggest boundary because it goes all the way to the river, Columbia River down on the Orban border. And we we pull our Plymouth families from from down, down by the river. So a little background on on boundary changes. We, of course, have done them for as long as I've been here, and that's that's a while. But the most recent ones were in 2017 and 2018. That one was done because we were going to open Amen Creek Elementary School. So we had to change boundaries to accommodate for that that new school. And that was put in place then in the 2018, 2019 school year. And then we also did a smaller boundary change in 2018 and 2019. And that was to grow Amistad a little bit because we were completing phase two of that of that school. So we had to increase that boundary to bring in more kids to fill that school. So we do have a process for making decisions about about boundary changes. For one thing, we we utilize a mapping system. And actually, we were, it's a new mapping system this year. We were trained on that today. And for sure, we'll need more training because it's a very, it's a very intricate piece of software. But we use that software, we can move, bad, we can just click and drag and change the boundary and then take a look at what that does to like student counts for the school that just grew, that boundary that grew, and then the one that shrunk a little bit. We also have to determine some criteria for some really important decisions. For example, we need to be talking with our transportation folks just to make sure that whatever boundary changes we make, that they're going to be able to accommodate those changes. And we want to make sure that with those changes, we don't inadvertently put students on a bus for a long period of time because we've changed that boundary. Also, be talking about walk zones. We want students to be able to walk to that neighborhood school that's that's closest to them. We also are going to have to talk a little bit about program placements, specifically with special ed. With with changing populations of a school, there could be some implications for for special ed programs. So like if we were to grow a school, we wouldn't, hopefully, wouldn't, when we grow that school, like to feel like we have to bump a special, special education program out of a building. So we have to, we have to think about that. And then also, just the concept of grandfathering families. You know, do we grandfather families into the school where they presently are? And if we do, how extensive that is? So there are lots of decisions that have to be made in this process. We, of course, will convene a committee within the district to to talk about those kinds of decisions and also just to look at different options for boundary changes. And then, of course, we would provide opportunities for for families and for community members to come and to to really learn about those different options for boundary changes and to provide input to the district so that if if it looks like we maybe we've totally missed something, that they could provide input so that we could, we could fix those things. Along that way, along the way, we'll seek your input and your guidance and direction for for that process. And then, of course, on the backend, we would be completing a board approval process. This table here shows all 17 of our elementary schools. And they're listed by the lowest enrollment down to the the highest enrollment. This is from the October 22 enrollment count. So you can see there's a big difference, like in between, you can see the big difference between Edison and Amen Creek, for example. I mean, Amen Creek is twice the size of Edison. The capacity number, what we looked at was just given their present situation today, or actually, October, October count, is how many more students could we put into each classroom without putting them into overload? So like a second grade classroom in Edison, if they had 16, 16 students, well, we think they could take another four or five students. So we, we just counted up all those potentially empty seats and then added it to the enrollment to get the, to get the capacity. You'll notice for Ridgeview, their capacity has a couple of asterisks there. It says at the bottom, it's, we're looking at that as a new Ridgeview. So Ridgeview, when they open in the fall of 2024, they will have four additional classrooms. So the capacity there, the 520, is taken into account that that will be four, four additional rooms. So some of the goals for our boundary adjustment for elementary, one is to distribute enrollment more equitably across the district. Again, school like Edison and the 300s, Amen Creek has about 750. We're just, we're going to be looking to try to balance as much as we possibly can across across the district. And then also, we want to build into our plan a way to accommodate for future growth. I mean, we're still building, especially out on the west end of our district. And so we're going to try to take that into account as we build boundaries and save room for the schools on the west end. We want to increase enrollment at the new and larger Ridgeview. Again, they're going to have four additional classrooms, which means they'll have the capacity for 90 to 100 students. And then we're going to be looking to decrease enrollment at Amen Creek and at Sagecrest elementary schools. Other schools that'll be affected, Sunset View, Edison and Vista, those, those are those low enrollment schools. So they will be affected because we're going to try to push more students to those buildings. Lincoln and Hawthorne will be, will probably be affected because that, they're part of the puzzle to to push more students like into Lincoln or possibly into into Vista. And then we might also be looking at some other other schools and changes with other boundaries like Westgate. So changing a boundary is a, it's a, it's a, it's a big thing. And so you kind of look at the pros, you kind of, you have to look at the cons. So the pros were, you know, avoid overcrowding. Some of our schools, of course, are already overcrowded. So, you know, trying to avoid that, avoid adding, actually, it says, avoid adding portables. I'm going to add the word additional portables because we already have a portable at Amen Creek. We have, I think, eight or nine portables at Sagecrest, which just opened like seven years ago. There, I think, seven, Vic, maybe seven or eight, yeah, portables. So avoid adding additional portables, avoid some staffing challenges. I mean, when a school gets so big, it just, it just creates some challenges. All elementary schools, for example, have, you know, they have two administrators, they have a single counselor. But at a bigger school, it just has to look a little bit differently than it would at a smaller school. We also want to avoid having schools that are too small because schools that are too small have their own challenges, just different challenges than the larger schools. And then avoid, the last pro there is avoid resource issues. For example, a school's budget is based pretty much on student FTE. And so a school like Amen Creek would have just that much more budget dollars, more budget dollars than a school like Edison. The cons, of course, parents and kids love their schools. And that's a really good thing, that they love their schools. But some of them are going to love them so much, they may not want to move to another building. And then because we would be looking at pushing out quite a few students from Amen Creek and moving them to another building or a couple of other buildings, that would, what that would do is potentially would, we just wouldn't need that many teachers at Amen Creek and would have to possibly then be sent to like another building that has grown. So the the timeline for what we're looking at is we want to complete this process this school year to determine new boundaries to take effect not next fall, but the fall after. And the main reason for wanting to do it the fall after is because we need to match the timing with opening up the new Ridgeview. Because, excuse me, if if we were to do it next year, and the hope would be that we could push a bunch of students into Ridgeview because they're bigger, they won't have room next year because they're still going to be at the Fruitland Building. So we have to, we're going to plan it this year and then implement it in the fall of 2024. So looking at this over the year, December 14th, we're here tonight doing the the boundary change overview. And then the big work really begins, well, we've already started meeting. But then we'll go into January and February, working with a committee, working with our new software to figure out what kind of boundary changes we'd be looking at. And then in February, we come to the February 22nd board meeting to share with you where we are in the process, show some potential options, where we might be able to move a boundary. And then in March, we would hold some parent meetings. Again, Again, I mentioned that before, we'd hold some parent meetings so that they could come really learn about the changes that we're thinking about and then offer input on those changes. The April 26th actually is not on your calendar. It's not calendared yet, but we're hoping that we could have like a board study session to update you again on the process. We would come back and talk about, you know, input that we received from families so that you could get a sense for, for what folks are thinking. May 10th, I would come and give an initial recommendation for the boundary changes. And then finally, at the May 24th meeting, I would come with a final recommendation because you're going to give input. On May 10th, I'd come with a final recommendation on the 24th and then hope for some board action at the end of that presentation. So in a nutshell, brief nutshell, that's the process.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, Diane.
So you were saying that when you did the total building numbers of capacity, those were based on empty spots in grade levels.
Right.
So third graders become fourth graders, become fifth graders. So how does, you know, we, you can't prognosticate who's going to be in kindergarten first and second. So let's say we, I'll choose Edison because that's my area. So let's say you put another 40-some kids in there. And then because of all the apartments that are there, and I know you already looked at that, but you have families with five kids move in and all these kids come up, you know, we've seen that before. So how, then you put portables there? That's what we've done before.
Well, I mean, potentially we could. The hope would be that we would not. And even if, I mean, we wouldn't find that out until the, you know, close to the beginning of the school year, which would be too late to roll a portable.
Right. So then, then what do we do? We overload classrooms?
So, no, well, hopefully not, because that's not good for anybody.
No.
I do know, and I, we just, we were briefly trained earlier today on the software. There's a piece of the software that, that can, I don't think the word is predict, but can maybe.
Can I explain? Other rules are available, we're just not putting them up there.
Other classrooms. So, thank you, thank you. There are, so like you specifically mentioned Edison. I know that Edison, like, has an empty classroom. So at the beginning of the year, if we ran into that, I mean, again, it's not the best case scenario, but once those kids really show up, we could have another teacher hired. So like if there was a big influx of second graders or fourth graders, we could hire an additional teacher. So, because I know that they do, Edison, I know, has classroom, classroom space.
But it's not usually just one grade level. You get, you know, five, 10, 15, five.
Yeah. And I think because of that, I mean, again, no one wants to go into overload, but if we had to go into overload, there's contract language that allows for that.
But it's not the best scenario for students and staff.
No, it's not.
So that's, and I did not know that capacity was based on grade levels. And so that gives me more information. Thank you.
Yeah, that, yeah, that capacity is, today, how many empty seats they have? And how, how many more kids could each classroom take without going into overload? So like for a K3 classroom, we'd be looking at 20 or 21. For a four or five classroom, fourth or fifth grade classroom, we'd like 25, 26. Although, before we get to overload, we, there's still more room for overload.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute break here. We'll reconvene about 7:40.
Oh, you're taking your garbage? That's why I'm going to take a chatty out to eat.
I don't need to poke at them. That's always been a problem.
Look at Ed brick fix coming, buddy.
No, because we're using your server numbers.
Good.
Exercises, this is for first reading. Dr. Pierce.
Okay. Well, I prepared just a few comments to provide some background and introduction this evening to both recap for the board and for the community, the recent history and discussion regarding flags prior to the board's review and first reading of the draft policy tonight. So recently, some parents and community members have contacted board members with concerns about pride flags being displayed in some classrooms. These parents and community members have expressed that they feel the flags are distracting or make their children feel uncomfortable. These parents and community members have expressed concerns about their children being indoctrinated into certain viewpoints and expressed that they feel the pride flags are political or religious in nature, and there are laws and district policies prohibiting political or religious viewpoints being displayed in classrooms. As classrooms should be politically and religiously neutral, and students should be free to express their own viewpoints as long as they're not discriminatory, harassing, or disruptive in nature, and classrooms should not have a chilling effect on student expression. Other parents and community members have recently contacted board members to express their support of pride flags being displayed in classrooms. These parents and community members have expressed that they feel the pride flags are a symbol of welcoming and inclusion for students who have historically been the target of bullying or harassment or marginalized by other students. These parents and community members have expressed that they believe that the flags are related to student identity and self-expression, and they're not political or religious in nature and not expressing any political or religious viewpoint. They have shared that the flag pride, excuse me, that the pride flag being displayed shows students that all students are welcome and included. So based on what board members have been hearing from the community, the board requested that some research be conducted regarding the legal aspects of this issue. There is law, existing RCW, that specifies the display of state and United States flags in schools, and we have some existing board policy about flag displays in terms of the United States flag being displayed in classrooms, but there's no law exists, existing specifically pertaining to pride flags being displayed in schools or classrooms. There are legal implications related to speech and expression and viewpoint discrimination, and those have been shared with the board and explained by district legal counsel, and we do have district legal counsel here tonight, Bronson Brown. The board then directed that I work with Bronson to draft a policy that was focused on the size of flags being displayed, those flags other than the United States flag being displayed in classrooms. So at the November 9th board meeting, the board reviewed a draft policy that was presented that reflected the board's initial direction, and board members then discussed some potential additions to the policy that was presented. At the end of the discussion, the board directed Bronson and me to draft an updated policy and bring it back to the board for first reading tonight, and the board wanted to ensure that the community had the opportunity to see the draft in full and to be able to comment on the draft. The update, excuse me, the updated draft that the board will discuss this evening was included in board materials, and they are posted publicly on the district website the Monday prior to the meeting. Since the time that the draft has been posted, the board has been receiving emails from community members about the updated draft and has also heard from the community tonight during public comment. Community members have shared their perspectives on this topic, and the perspectives that are shared are really as diverse as the community that we serve. When there's a diversity of opinion and perspective within the community, it does make it challenging for the board to, to make a decision that the entire community will agree with. Community members have differing ideas and perspectives, and the board is tasked with representing the entire community, which makes it challenging for the board when there's strong divergent opinions within the community. While the entire community may not always agree with the board's decisions, it is important that the board make policy decisions that are consistent with law, align with our goals to ensure that all students are safe, known, and valued, and that these policies are able to be objectively applied throughout the system. So with that, just recap, I will go ahead and proceed with presenting the updated draft for the first reading. There are some notes on that draft from the discussion in, in November, and I'll also invite Bronson to come up to the other podium as the board may have some, some specific questions for, for Bronson. So I'm going to start actually with page two. Let's see, looks like we're not projecting yet. Joseph, are you, are you there? Let's see, excuse me, for just one moment. Okay, so I wanted to start with just a recap of the notes that we took during the board discussion on November 9th. So we had presented the first version of this, which really focused on the size of flags being displayed in classrooms, flags that were other than a U.S. flag. And so there was some, some discussion about other ideas and verbiage that board members wanted to see in the draft policy, so we captured that here, and we can come back and reference it later if needed. And so what you see here on the screen is, I'll try to highlight what the, what the changes from the first version that was presented in November to the version that you see this evening. So this, in November, the policy started here with the flag of the U.S. and the flag of the state, and that's just wording that's right out of the law. This first sentence in, in red. This sentence in black font is existing policy language on flag exercises. So then this definition of flag was something that was included in the first version that you saw in, in, in November, but this next part is a new addition to address some of the things that some board members said they wanted to include in terms of, before it just said no flag larger than the U.S. flag may be displayed, and then the new additions are the following bullets in terms of no flag may be hung higher, multiples may not be displayed, can't cover a window. And then there were some specific areas that we highlighted in yellow, Bronson and I did, to, to be sure that, you know, we had a conversation, kind of a back and forth about some of the ideas maybe being subjective in nature and, and, you know, who's, who's going to determine what that means, for example, causing a distraction. That might be something for the board to discuss as it's a little subjective. Or, you know, used to signal or attract attention, again, you know, is, that's a potential for subjective. And then this first sentence was one that was suggested by a board member, and we put in here, and, but the board noted that they wanted to discuss that first sentence. So with that, I think I've just kind of encapsulated the changes from the first version to the second version that Bronson and I made based on the board's direction, and so at this point, I'm, I think I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Connors, for the discussion.
Okay. So I'm assuming there's probably lots of discussion that wants to go on about this? Maybe not. Who would like to start off? Please?
I'd just say, it's more like a question, and you sort of touched on it. Is, is that considered permanently displayed?
So in classrooms, I guess I'd answer it this way, in our classrooms, the, the American flag, the United States flag is, is displayed, it's hung on the wall, like there's a, a flag hanger, and it's hung kind of permanently on the wall versus being on a movable pole around the classroom. So we were kind of thinking about what does it, what did, what's the current installation of United States flags, and so that's, that's what we were kind of thinking there.
What I've seen in classrooms, some classrooms, are flags just stuck in a peg, a base, and the flag is just stuck in the base, or it's hung from a poster, hanging on the wall. And to me, that's not permanent, and if it's not permanent, what is written here doesn't apply. Am, correct?
That's right.
Which, which part are you referring to, Ron, sorry?
Permanent, display.
The middle, the middle paragraph.
The flag is defined as a piece of cloth.
Yeah, so every classroom has the American flag, and they do the pledge every morning, right? I mean, that to me would be the, their permanent flag, right?
That's correct.
So most of, most of them have that, like you said, that hanger, like on the door with the flag sticking out of it, but I would think if a cla, I mean, I would think if a class is using the U.S. flag, if it's hanging next to the door on the wall, and that's the one they say the pledge to, I mean, that to me is pretty permanent.
Is another word that means like always in a classroom rather than a fixed location?
Yeah. Why we included that language is the board said wording to include permanent displays. So the board asked that we put wording in there about permanent displays, so that's why we did that.
See, in that, in that top paragraph, flags under the United States flag, when permanently displaying flags other than the United States flag, the following restrictions apply. So it's, it's not permanent, the restrictions do not apply.
So is there, so like there's permanent means in, I think what Ron's referring to is like affixed in a location, correct, Ron?
Right.
Yeah, so maybe we can modify that word to words with method, to where it's like always in the classroom, you know, there's, because there's always a flag in every classroom.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Maybe just a point of order is I think that there has to be a, a motion made prior to, you know, discussion, I think, but I'm not 100% sure Bronson will know, he can help us.
Yeah. It needs to be a motion, of course, that someone makes the motion, second, then you have discussion.
That's true.
And the person who makes the motion second doesn't necessarily mean they have the vote for the motion, it's to get it.
On the table for discussion.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to discuss policy 2333.
I make a motion that we discuss policy 2333 as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, now I will open it up for questions and comments.
Now, I said what I said before.
Did I?
Move it over, copy and paste.
So is there a word that replaces permanent that means?
What if we drop?
Always in a class?
What if we drop permanent? When, when displaying flags other than the United States flag in school, the restrictions apply.
Because above it states that there's always a, it's always a flag in the class.
That permanent flag is the United States flag and the state flag. All other flags under the United States flag, and I, I suggest we say the, the State of Washington flag also. Or is that not required?
That's fine, I like that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So just to point out, at the, at the beginning of the policy, it says, and this is right out of RCW, like pretty much verbatim, that the flag of the United States and the flag of the state shall be prominently installed, displayed, and maintained in schools. So that's kind of in schools, you know, and then the United States flag being in good condition shall be displayed during school hours at every school site and in every school classroom. So I just want to point out that that part in there is, is there at the beginning of the, of, and that was added because when we were doing the kind of legal research, we saw that that was wording in the RCW, existing wording, but we didn't have that in our policy. Our policy only said this, these words right here.
I, I thought during, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, please.
I thought during our discussions before, we, we wanted the United States flag and this Washington state flag, and we're making this policy for KSD, right? So.
That's correct.
And you want the Washington state flag in every classroom?
There is, because it already says flag of the U.S. and the flag of the state.
Well, I, I will say, my current belief is that, so is, again, this kind of surfaced this issue, and I think I maybe mentioned it last time, right now, outside of our schools and outside of the district office, we have a United States flag prominently displayed. I do not believe that we have a Washington state flag displayed at all of our school sites outside, you know, along with the United States flag.
We do not.
So, so that's one thing that will need to be addressed if this policy passes. There's a second sentence, though, specifically to the flags in classrooms, and right now we, we have a United States flag displayed prominently, you know, in every classroom, but not a Washington state flag, and, and the pledge exercises, of course, are for the, the United States flag.
Okay. I'm not pushing policy here, so if that's the way that we said, I'm, I'm not pushing that we have a state flag, but I thought in our discussion before, those were the two flags that we, we wanted, but I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not pushing that.
I understand, I understand, I agree with what you just said, too.
I don't, that's what we said, but, but I'm still back to the point, they're permanent. Does this apply?
So just remove, remove permanent when displaying flags?
If you do that, because up above, the United States flag has to always be in the classroom, up above, and so.
So whether that words are or not?
Yeah, so all you do, and when you take the word permanently out, you're making those conditions apply to all flags instead of just be restricted to permanent flags. And so when someone comes in and just temporarily sticks something somewhere, they'll say, that's not permanent, so I can do whatever.
Yes, Dr. Pierce.
What I recall as part of this conversation is, you know, board members saying, well, there might be a time where somebody might bring in a flag as part of a lesson.
Yes.
And so we, that you were talking about not those instances, but the instances of it being permanently displayed. Bronson, do you recall that part of the conversation?
Brought that up, and that was one of the only points in here that I didn't see, is that, is I just wanted to make sure that like, you know, there are temporary flags which are subject appropriate at times and that can enhance learning, you know, so I think there should be a place for that.
So, so that's, that's where this wording came from, because the board asked it to be addressed.
I don't see it on there, though.
Wording to include permanent displays.
Yeah, was, that was, I mean, that was the intent of the permanently, because if, I think, well, what Mike was getting at, if you bring flags in to show as a part of a lesson that you're teaching, and it doesn't comply with those conditions, they don't, you want to be able to apply, show them. So that's what, flags not permanently displayed, it's for a lesson. That's what you're saying.
Thank you.
So Bronson, if the wording is silent, does that not make it permissible? So if it doesn't, we don't need to say that you can bring things in for show and tell, display, curricula. If it's silent and it doesn't say anything, then that's permissible, correct?
That's right. So like the way you have it right now, keep the word permanently in there, someone brings in a, a flag, some type of flag, let's say a Wazoo flag, it's bigger than the United States flag, but they're just doing it to talk about colleges or something like that. Well, it's a temporary flag, it's not permanent, and so none of those conditions apply, so they can't bring the flag in the classroom.
The subject, the subjectivity would be how long it's there, right?
Okay, on, on that point, so is it permanent, could we put in parentheses full time? Is that too simplistic?
Are we asking Bronson for a legal, legal statement?
Someone's playing flags full time?
Yeah.
In parentheses, you're saying permanent, and the parenthesis is actually an attempt to better define permanent, it's in full time.
I mean, yeah, you could put it in there, I mean, it's.
Would it bias anything, I don't know.
So I, I'm just trying to think, you know, what Mike brought up of lessons, usually if you bring a flag in for a lesson, someone is going to be in there for the one day, right?
Right.
I mean, the intent is, I think what, what your intent is, is trying to restrict the flags that are there for more than one day, maybe?
Every day of the school year, a flag been in there full time, from, from the time you bring it in to.
Yeah, so I mean, it would be a good interpretation.
I'm just throwing this stuff.
No, I'm sure.
I'll make it.
So we've got some verbiage in here that, again, is very subjective, that's, is not going to, I don't think it's going to fly, I mean, our first sentence, again, that is a very subjective stance, and there'll be a lot of people who would argue against that. I think that need to be removed.
Which one is that?
The flag of the United States.
Yeah, I, I think we should just stick to what we're trying to accomplish, not, not making a statement, and, and believe me, I love the flag, I have one at my house, so, but I don't need to define or give someone a lesson on a flag in this policy. So if we could just stay to the flag of the United States, shall be, and just stick to what we want and how we want it displayed.
And.
Yeah, please.
So, Dr. Pierce, is it correct that the first sentence after the yellow board wanted to discuss the flag of the United States and the flag of the state shall be prominently installed, displayed, and maintained in schools? That was already in prior language.
This wording was not in prior language, in existing policy language, but it's in the RCW.
Okay.
Then the, the, the suggestion was to add this first sentence, but then the board said, excuse me, that they wanted to discuss that, adding that sentence further. This sentence. Sorry.
So the first two sentences, just for, for me to clarify, the first two sentences after the yellow, so beginning with the flag of the United States and then the second one, a U.S. flag being in good, good condition are, is RCW language?
Yeah, so just to, yeah, this language that I just highlighted here, the flag of the United States and the flag of the state. Yep, that's right out of the law, and it just wasn't in our current policy language. Our current policy language starts right here and speaks to flag exercises, but not to displays, which is why now this updated version says flag displays and exercises. But the first sentence is the one that the board said they wanted to discuss.
So the issue with the first sentence is what? What's the issue?
Subjective.
And then, so if it is subjective, then, then what? Let's like play it out, then what? Then.
It needs to come out.
Take it out, remove it.
Because.
It's subjective.
And I, I guess, guys, I just don't understand, like, like, what happens if that's there? I mean, does, does someone sue the school because, or, I mean, I don't understand.
That may, I guess I'll say, yeah, it's, it's possible someone would not, uh, agree with that statement, and we're not here to, to make an agreeable or disagreeable statement. We're saying, how do we agree to display flags? And, and that's, that's all. We, we're not saying what it's about, we're not saying curl a con against how much you love the flag, we're just saying, we want it displayed, and this is how we want it displayed. Okay, I'm gonna give you an example. If I, I'm going back to my military days, if I went in the military and I saluted the flag like this, I would get yelled at, because you salute it like this, and that's well defined, you just salute, so if someone walks up to their flag and they don't agree with how I'm saluting it, someone's going to let me know. We don't want those kind of rules. We want the rules to say, if that flag is not in the classroom like we set it, that is a violation, not how you believe about the flag. Did that help you at all?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I mean, I, I think that teaching. teaching patriotism is, is actually important. And I think that, yeah, I think that adding context to what the flag is, and I do think it's the most recognizable symbol of the United States. I mean, everybody in the world pretty much recognizes that flag.
Tracy?
I'd offer one thought on that topic. So really, th- this, this policy doesn't really speak to anything about curriculum, right, or what's being taught to kids. There is a civics curriculum, and learning about the Constitution and the flag and, and our history and all of that is part of the, the curriculum that is taught to kids. Kids don't usually, you know, read policy language and learn from it. And I just mean that respectfully. I'm just saying that there's sort of, maybe it's helpful to differentiate between what's being taught to kids in classrooms, what's part of the curriculum, versus like what's in the policy about what can be in classrooms.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, it's a moot point. I mean, I'm obviously going to get voted down, but just wanted to be for the record that I, I do think it should be there.
Diane, you have a comment?
So I'm trying to, I'm not quite sure how I want to say this. So I don't believe, I'm just gonna say it. I don't believe that we ever had a question about the, the permanent or temporary installation, or anything about the United States and the Washington State flag. That's never been an issue. I know sometimes when we have new rooms, our flags don't get there fast enough, and the kids are just really sometimes stressed, and teachers will draw them or paint them or quilt them or whatever. So I don't believe that that's ever been an issue, and I don't believe that's why this policy was written. So, and, and I know verbiage is really important, Ron, it is to me, too. But the part of, the meat of this, I guess, that, that the discussion has come about and that we have had people with strong feelings is the other flags. And so, I guess I want to make sure that we give equal time to the rest of the meat of the policy, please.
Mr.?
I, I couldn't agree more. But because this is gonna cause some debate, we want to fix as many loopholes as we can before we, we vote on this policy. That's my thought.
Yeah.
And to me, that's a loophole. I know I'm being petty.
No, not at all.
But I know some other people could be even more pettier. And there's another couple of things in there, such as, well, I guess we'll solve this problem. First, but a flag cannot have to be a piece of cloth.
Correct.
It could be a piece of plastic. It could be vinyl. It could be. So that's just how, how picky I guess I'm being, but I know someone else can be just as picky. So as a unified group here, if we can take, address this pettiness now, it, it might eliminate it coming up in the future.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I just want to make sure that we give equal time to the reason that this was brought up.
Yeah.
I'm not sure either.
So are we still back at permanent? And what word may or may not suffice?
I think if we go in the order of what's listed, we gotta decide whether we're gonna keep the first sentence or drop the first sentence.
Do we have to do votes and motions to amend all these things, or are we just gonna?
No, not, not right now.
Once we get to the final, what we agree upon, I think.
Right, that's correct.
So then how do we determine who wants that sentence in there or not?
You can just say what you prefer.
Oh, okay. I would prefer to keep it in.
You want to keep it in?
Yeah.
Again, regardless of whether we agree with it or not, it's, it's, this is not the place for, as, as Dr. Pierce stated, a civics lesson. This is, you know, how are we going to display flags?
Sure.
So I think that's a, it's, it's just not the place for it. Whether you agree with it, disagree with it, it's just, it's just not the place.
Right. So at this point, all of us have weighed in on it, and it sounds like three would prefer to take it out. So then it's scratched, right?
Bronson, I'm gonna ask for a little support here on the process.
So the process is, you don't have to, like, if some of you are saying, I want that in, some not. When you go for a vote, those that don't like what's in the policy, then they're gonna, they're not gonna vote to pass it.
Right.
Until you get it to where you want.
Would, would they need to vote on amending the draft policy that's on the table for discussion?
If, if that's, yeah, because this is on the table to pa, to pass. So if you then take a vote, and it fails, then someone then has to make another motion to amend it, and then say what, what parts you want to amend.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess I may, I'll have a vote to remove the first sentence.
So is it a vote to remove?
You don't have to vote to remove the sentence.
A vote to pass this game?
You just, you call for a vote of this.
Right.
If you don't like it, you don't vote for it. But I would suggest, at least, before you vote on this motion, maybe have more discussion on some of the language, so you not keep going back like, okay, well, now we gotta, go down the motion, and then amend this part, and then this part. Why don't you just, since it's on the floor, talk about all of it, and then, yes.
Thank you. That's very effective.
Okay. So we talked about the first sentence, we talked about permanently. So I would, that last bullet point hung in the matter that causes distraction. I think that's subjective. So.
Correct.
Might as well strike that bullet point.
Yeah.
Covering windows is covered in a bullet point. I think that's probably the main distraction.
Um, may I make a comment about, so you've been to Southridge? Have you been to the library?
Sure have.
And there's a very large, massive US flag hanging in there that was gifted by community members for other family members that hangs in a window.
But Diane, it says flags other than the United States flag.
But it also says here what flags are, then the last bullet, or next to last, flags may not be used to cover a window.
Yeah.
It doesn't say flags other than.
It does.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Flags other than, okay. Thank you.
So, so in theory, then, if a teacher had a US flag hanging over their window, that would be, it would be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. No.
So, I mean.
If that was gonna concern.
Because of the subjectivity, we could move that, remove that last bullet point.
You, you, we missed one, though. And again, apologize for being picky. But a piece of cloth.
So Ron, the last bullet point, you see where it says note, the last bullet point? I feel like that could be inserted in the sent, the paragraph you're referring to, because I feel like those are kind of together, right?
What's that?
So the, the very last note.
The yellow one?
Yep.
In addition.
In addition, yep. No posters. So that feels like that's, that's part of the, the paragraph, a flag as defined as. Like, that should be in that paragraph. Because that kind of, that kind of answers your question, right?
No. Like, what, which question is that?
So you're saying a flag is not always a piece of cloth. A flag can be other things.
Right.
Right? In addition, no posters or other signage may be used like a flag to signal or attract attention. So it's kind of referencing that, that posters or other signage, like, it can be used like a flag. So in defining what a flag is, I agree with you that it is more than just a piece of cloth. It could also be a poster writ, drawn on. It could be, you know, other signage. And that.
I guess, I guess I'm misunderstanding. I'm saying that a flag can be anything other than a piece of cloth.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, too. Yep.
But this is precluding, the bottom one is precluding others made out of other things, whereas Ron's saying.
It should be inclusive.
It should be inclusive of those things that are not just fabric or whatever, not, not precluding.
As, as a point of closure, a flag defined as material, usually rectangular or so on and so on, is that a saying, a piece of cloth?
Yeah.
So say, yeah. Yeah. And I think, I think you, you guys initially pulled this from a definition in the dictionary or something, I think, is where it says a piece of cloth. But I would be fine with changing it to material versus piece of cloth.
Yeah, what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. That's, yeah.
So here's something we just seem to be dancing around with. So we have teachers at high schools that have pride flags in their classrooms. So what do we do with those? Let's just go, let's get, I mean, we're dancing around this. Let's knock this off.
What I was saying.
This is the part that's, I'm a little aggravated about.
Sure, they, they could, they could have those flags as long as it falls in this criteria.
Yep.
Right? So there's no banning flags, which has been common misinformation out in the community. They can have the flags as long as it meets these criteria.
That was my question for, I was gonna ask that question to Bronson. Bronson and Trace, you guys drafted this. And I might be missing something, but does it say banning? Does it say we're banning anything? Does it say, am I missing that language? Am I not reading it properly?
Yeah, I don't think you see the word, you know, ban here or anything. I think where we highlighted things that aren't real clear and objective, right? I think it's, you know, you asked it about the size. You gave direction on the, the size of a flag, the, the height, or like where it's hung, how many, and covering windows. And then there were some additional things that like causes distraction. Well, that's subject, subjective. And so we put it in there, but are noting that, you know, that's where we see that as being subjective and not objective. And then like, like a flag to sing, signal or attract attention would be another area. You know, like every sign is meant to attract attention. That's why it's a sign, right? Like, and so all of our classrooms have curriculum signs and posters and all kinds of things that are designed to attract attention. So that's a subjective.
Yeah.
So, so that's why we noted those things, that the other things are more objectively understood.
The top four solid, because you can define those. Everyone knows what that is. Everyone knows it. Open the window, not a lot.
So everything you have highlighted, I would say, we can go.
I think everyone here agrees on that.
That's fine, it's good.
So I have a question on multiples of the same flags may not be displayed. So if I go into a German class, I can guarantee you that there will be more than one German flag. It, and you could talk about other classes, too. So is that German teacher then no longer allowed to have more than one German flag displayed?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. He would have one, he would have one German flag.
I think that that.
I think the intent's maybe two or three, but not 10, or 12, or 15, or 70.
The word multiple means more than one, though.
Okay, so less than 10?
Well, I, I'm not gonna play numbers games. Okay. But the thing is, is that you're, you're moving into curricula, I think, when you talk about the numbers of things that can be there. And there are reasons that a teacher may put up more than one item. It could be over time. It could be from different places. When our students, I'll use German, Spanish, French, it doesn't matter, when our world language students do projects, one of the things they all do is they make a flag of that country. And then those are displayed either in the classroom or in the hallway. So I think you, you kind of get into that on, on that multiple word.
So my, my response to that would be, A, it's not permanent, and, and B, the RCW is the United States flag, and the, and the state flag should be prominently installed. And I think the intent is that it is the, it is the most prominent flag in the room. So if you walk into a classroom and every eight feet, there's a flag all the way around eye level around the entire school, then that would say, okay, that, now you're, now you're outshining the American flag. But by sheer volume, it's, it's definitely the most, now, now there's another flag that is more prominent than the, than the American flag.
I still think that you're interrupting or interceding in curricula, which is, is that the point of this?
So those flags wouldn't be, those flags wouldn't be permanent. So, so a teacher could display their classroom's flag, and then, I mean, do they leave them up all year long?
At, at times, or the, or the teacher themselves may leave them up all the time. You know, each teacher is different, certainly. But I know I've been in classes where the, I'm just using German, because that's the classroom that I was in most recently, and there are flags that have been up there for several years, multiple flags of Germany.
So then do we need a bullet point regarding something, something to do with, if made within the curricula, curriculum?
I just think that the, the bullet point of multiples is kind of nebulous. I don't know that it's necessary.
I am thinking. I, I just remember going into a classroom and I saw multiple WSU flags. And I'm a big fan of WSU. I don't want that taken away.
You know, Ron, I agree with you. I don't want Seahawks flags taken away, or WSU, or, or Washington flags. I agree with you. And, and this is kind of like one of those happy medium things, right? Where you're trying to get things that, that both sides can live with, that nobody loves, nobody's like maybe 100% on, on board with. So there's concessions to be made. Yeah, I would love Seahawks flags all over, but.
I've seen multiple United States flags.
But that's, I would, that's, these are other than, so.
No, not the main one. I've seen multiple US.
Of different.
Small USA flags, like Fourth of July coming up, or some, I know, not Fourth of July, but some, some celebration.
Right. But, but we're talking about, these are, multiples are, are other than the United States flag. So there can be multiple United States flags, but other than the United States flag.
Oh, there can be multiple United States.
Yes. Yes.
Other than.
Yeah. Or can be.
United States.
Yeah. So if it's Fourth of July, and there's a, there's a US flag on every kid's desk for a month.
Don't, don't hate anybody. So the Washington State flag, just, just one of them.
Under this.
Just one, yes. Yeah, just one, right.
I think that's, I'm, I'm, I hate to say my opinions. I, I think it's too restrictive. I think you just put handcuffs on the, the teacher, the person that's gonna do this instruction, may want some emphasis on, I guess that wouldn't be permanently displayed. But.
But it could be, like, I was talking about in a particular world language class.
Right.
Could be.
I just, I just don't want to take away the teacher's ability to set up their classrooms to emphasize what they need to emphasize for that year. I, I'm not qualified to do that. So that's, that's why I choke on it a little bit.
I agree with you, Ron.
So would you agree to remove multiples of the same flag would not be displayed?
No. No. I mean, like.
Then you just said you just.
I do. I agree with him. And, and I think that, but like I said, it's, there's, this is not gonna be a perfect policy for everybody. Like, everybody's not gonna say, yes, this is an A-plus policy, right? It's, it's, it's called a compromise, where, where everybody's sort of giving a little bit, but it's, everybody can live with it, right? So there are certain groups that don't want, for example, the pride flag. There's groups that do not want the pride flag in the schools. And there are certain groups that really, really say it's important. So how do you compromise? You say, well, we're gonna allow it, but it just can't outshine the American flag. And that's a compromise. That's, that's saying that, hey, yes, it's there. That student still has that indication that they can or can't talk to a teacher, which I think they should always be able to talk to every teacher anyway. If they can't, there's probably an issue with the teacher. But now they still have that visual indicator. It doesn't have to be to cover the entire wall. It can be small. They have their visual indicator. It, it, it meets what, it meets that, their need. I, I don't think, I've never heard anybody say that we have to have a flag that is bigger than the American flag, a pride flag. They can, you know, I mean, right? They want, they want to have a visual indicator that, that they, that tells them that that's a safe teacher to talk to. And I think that that is still, this allows for that. And then you have these other people who say, I don't want it in there at all. And you say, well, now we're, we're highlighting the American flag, the country we live in. So it's a, it's like a, it, like, I wouldn't, this is, if I was drawn to this policy myself, that's wouldn't be the policy at all that I would make. But in order of like, trying to, trying to listen to the community and listen to everybody, I think this is a compromise. So I can agree with Ron. Those things are not mutually exclusive. I can agree with Ron and still support, supportive. Because it's not about my opinion. It's about compromising and working with the community.
I, it's, it's a point that I could compromise. I, if we can, if this means we can get rid of the highlighted items, the three highlighted items, I can live with eliminated multiples. I, I don't know how many times I've seen multiple flags in a classroom. I haven't been in all classrooms, but I think. I haven't been in all classrooms, but I think, I think we can make a statement with one flag. Whether that's a German flag or an other flag. But I disagree with that.
No, no, but I just want to ask, so again, we're talking about teacher, teacher teaching, right? And the, the curriculum that that teacher uses to teach. And as Dr. Pierce said, that's what gets students' attention. That's why we put things up in classrooms that connect to the curriculum that we're teaching. So, you know, we have that freedom for teachers to teach within the curriculum and put out whatever they need, field aid for their students. So my concern about the multiples or making sure there are not multiples is that we are stepping into the realm of operational rather than policy.
So, and to, to argue the other side is that the curriculum has still been adhered to because they're not permanent. So if you need to do some emphasis of teacher and instructor, what have you, seem like there's still be to bring in five flags for that curriculum day or week or how long that subject is being taught, but it can leave only one of those flags.
Okay, and that's good. So I'm gonna get back to the word permanently then. So how long does that mean that that person can leave a flag up, multiples up?
I think, and that's okay, but I thought we were moving on from the word permanent.
Well, I'm just using that because.
A stumbling block, but we can, we can come out with a, we can, let's make this go, come out with a definition.
That's the thing, I don't want that because the, the bottom line is this goes to administration and administration is the, the final arbiter of, of what that is. So are we gonna ask our administrators to walk through buildings and say, Ron, you've had that up for three weeks? That's too hung, like, you know, that's, and I'm being a little facetious, but who makes that decision?
We're giving some guidelines to the people that's gonna enforce this. We're not gonna go out and enforce it. Someone's gonna, so we can say, well, it could be the teacher. We say, hey, teachers, these are the rules and we trust that you're gonna abide by them. This, this is what we, and, and for as the time period goes, I, this is for first reading. We're putting the challenge back out to these folks to come back with the second reading, with our comments. Temporary, we can define temporary, we can say, as long as it takes to get the point across for your curriculum.
No, thank you, yeah, that's a great one.
Just, just, and, and as far as, yeah, the policing of it, we don't police every single day of a teacher's classroom. We just can't do that. We have to put the rules out there and they're professionals. We trust them to follow the rules.
Great. One of the things I spoke briefly to London about is having her discuss this policy after the first reading with some of her leadership, people at the other, at the high school specifically, get their feedback. Because again, we're just, we're sitting here, we're, we're hearing what the, the public's telling us, what do the kids have to say? Where's their head on it? I mean, we, we, we heard some kids who are very eloquent, have made very impassioned speeches. Let's hear what the rest of the kids have to say. Let's see if we can't get some more feedback from them. So as a, as a representative of others, I would encourage you and charge you to, to do that by the next meeting and give us an idea. And it won't be perfect, it won't be scientific, but it will be, you know, you should have your finger, or maybe rephrase, that was okay. I believe you have your finger on the pulse of what's going on at your school and the other schools. And you can reach out to your other peers to hear what they have to say.
Because that's a pretty big challenge for, for London. I, I, I would just suggest that, you know, with the superintendent student advisory group, we met today. We've got representatives from all of the schools. London is a part of that group. If, if the board wants feedback, you know, that could be one way that we could put this on an agenda for the next meeting to get feedback from that group.
Great, and I, I certainly wasn't trying to pile on, you know, because she's, you know, trying to go to college and everything, you know, so, and more stuff. Again, just trying to, to, to make sure we're hearing the students' voices. And however, you know, you and Dr. Pierce can come up with a plan, that would be wonderful. And I think it'd be very valuable.
At the, in Richland, the Lee, Finn, Karen, who I know you know, they sent out a questionnaire, just a three questionnaire, went out to the principals and then the principals sent it out to the students. And there, they figured there's about 4,000 high school kids and they got about 1,400 and some responses. And that was in like a three-day period. So, you know, we've got more kids, but we also have a little more time. So maybe if something similar to that could be put up. And it was safeguarded through the principal so that it couldn't be anybody but the school students that filled it out so that there was no question as it, as it was from the students. So I don't know, that's an option too, that if we needed to get his students quickly and get information back quickly.
Well, if we're gonna do that, I suggest we don't rush it. Because creating a survey, throwing it out for three days and getting back information, I think is.
No, I wouldn't say three days.
Is too much, so.
That's all they had, so.
If we're gonna do it, let's get some questions, let's make sure it's been reviewed and approved by whoever, like, act, like approved by someone, reviewed. Let's make sure we do the survey right, if we're gonna do a survey like that.
Well, I was talking with the Richmond representatives at the Wausau Conference about that. And they said that like, the way they approached it, they probably would change it a bit, like they felt like they were rushed in it, like what you guys were saying. So I was planning on meeting with them soon to figure out a way to approach that. And I know, I haven't had the chance to like reach out to a large number of the student body, but I've spoken to a few people at Kamiakin and like I've heard their thoughts on it, but like I have been looking to expand more. And I will get back to you more.
And, and I think, you know, I said this at the last one, because there was a comment made about, you know, we needed to get this done because if we didn't, it would be Christmas, et cetera. And I think that, you know, time is not of the essence in this. Giving time and, and thoughtfully and legally going through this with community input, I'm gonna say that over and over again, is the most important thing, and doing it legally, I think, too. But with student, major student input, I think is very important.
Okay, so we're at the point now, we've made some changes. Dr. Pierce, you've been scratching along with the changes we made, kind of sort of?
Well, I have.
So what, you have a motion for a floor right now, to pass, to discuss, essentially to ask for first reading this, how it is. I'm assuming when you call for the vote, it's not gonna pass. So you're going to need then another motion. If you want to pass something for a first reading, you're gonna need someone to make a motion to pass this for first reading with these changes. And it looks like it's pretty unanimous. That last bullet point, no flag may be hung in a matter that caused distraction is to be removed. And then that next sentence underneath that is to be removed, at least seems like that's a consensus.
And didn't we say the first?
And then. Your next motion is that you want the person is to be up to. And then just the middle paragraph, I, I couldn't tell if there was a consensus for the piece of cloth, if you wanted to say like a piece in the material, or if you just wanted the whole, to that, all of that to be removed. So this is a flag defined as you feel like, or if you wanted a piece of material. Piece of material is probably, I think it's pretty. Yeah, a, a piece of material, that's what I was, my suggestion.
All right, so we need to vote on the original motion, which was to accept policy 2333 for first reading in its current form.
It was just to discuss?
The motion that was made was to discuss.
Okay, I, I would change that motion to accept 2333 as presented for first reading.
Second.
For the discussion? If not, I'll call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Galbraith?
Uh, no.
Mr. Valentine?
Nope.
Ms. Sunvik?
No.
Mr. Mabry?
No.
Mr. Connors?
Wait a minute, I made a motion, it's gonna be recorded, that it got voted down.
It's okay, because you just did it so that it's performant to do that. It's okay, no, it does not.
All right, so now I will entertain a motion to, sorry, accept policy 2333 with amendments for first reading.
You may want to say amendments.
Oh, with amendments, striking the first, the first line.
Say it again, which one? I'm, I'm trying to make sure I'm getting everything, but.
Changing piece of cloth to material. What else? We're striking.
Permanent. Well, I, I'm still not sure where you are on this and this multiples. There's a lot of discussion.
At least from what I picked up, it looks like, seemed like there was a majority that, and I could be wrong, that wanted to keep multiples in there and delete the permanently displayed. At least you can try to, you can try a motion with those changes and see if it passes or if it doesn't.
Piece of material, permanently displayed. Anything else I'm missing?
Eliminate no flags may be hung in a manner.
Eliminate, which ones down?
The fourth bullet down.
Oh, fourth bullet, striking.
Fifth, fifth bullet down.
Oh, cause, oh, no, oh, no flag may be hung in a manner to be distracted, okay.
And then.
What's the last one?
In addition, no poster, the signage may be used as a flag, signal attention.
She's got it.
We're striking that as well, the last ones. In addition, in addition, no posters or signage may be used like a flag to signal or attract attention. Okay, I got it all?
Is there a way we can mock that up to see that?
Well, it's there, it's, it's.
I know.
Well, it's stretched out.
Eliminate the mockup.
When we, when we do the motion, do we need to read those lines or just can we?
It's just, just as presented by.
As presented, okay. Are we ready for that?
Yeah, we're.
Oh, I, I make a motion that we accept policy 2333, flag displays and exercise as amended for first reading.
Second.
Comments or questions? If not, I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvik?
No.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes. Okay.
So Gabe goes down on record as getting his way.
You.
You can have it.
Absolutely, but that's, that's all right, so that's okay. I'm kidding you guys, I'm sorry.
Well, I think, so we have a first reading and it's we, Bronson, it's, I was just teasing you. So you've, you've passed this for first reading as amended.
Yes.
So I think what we would do then is bring it back for second reading. I'm, I don't have any clarity on further, further things you want us to do with this. Like I, I'm, I'm not clear on that, I mean, so.
That's right, so the reason why we brought it up is because the board doesn't give us any other direction. We're gonna bring this back to the next meeting.
With a cleaned up version, you know, so without the strikers and so forth.
You know, cleaned up, you pass for first reading, it would be for.
Right, but we'll, we'll have, at that point, we should, we'll have feedback from London that we can discuss and then make our final adjustment or vote.
Just wanna make sure there's nothing else you want us to.
Nothing else for you to do.
Well, there is, I'm sorry. But it, it, we gave you, we, we cut out some of this stuff that, that we all agree upon. I still would like some energy put into maybe worth smithing that permanently, if, if you guys can come up with something better with permanently, or even multiples of the same flag, if you can come up with maybe some, and if you can't, you can say you can't. But those are highly contested things that we were talking about, right? So the second reading, we should address whether, okay, that's good enough now, that we, you know, we can't do anything better. That's what I think you come up with, that we've given you an amended version to start with by now. London is gonna come back with some things and, and maybe I'll do my homework and come back with some stuff for the second reading. And we can settle on a second reading. On some of these things, I get some agreement.
And what we could potentially try to do is come up, you know, bring, have one version that is what you passed here, a cleaned up version that you passed for first reading, then maybe a couple other versions that address some of the permanently and multiples that was discussed. In terms of timing, the next board meeting after break is a board study session. And so then the next board business meeting is the second meeting in January, and that's when it would come back.
And that would give London time after.
And we, and we do have a superintendent student advisory council meeting prior to that, so.
Just real quick of this, so if the policy is passed down the road at this meeting, is it effective that, that meeting or?
Yeah, typically, I mean, typically, policies take effect right away. You know, but.
The motion is that it's not gonna take effect until a certain day.
What I will say is we would be immediately out of, I think, out of compliance with the policy because I don't believe right now we have a United, or excuse me, we have a United States flag, but I don't believe we have a flag of the state prominently installed, displayed and maintained at schools. I just don't know. I mean, they're not displayed outside and I, you know, as I, I'm in schools all the time and I'm kind of trying to think of if, do I see a state of Washington flag? And does this mean being, well, it's not in the classroom because really the sec, it, this, it's not until the second part where it talks about that a US flag should be displayed in every classroom. So there's nothing in the RCW that says a Washington state flag has to be displayed in every classroom. But the RCW does say that a flag of the state shall be prominently installed, displayed and maintained in schools. So I think that's open to interpretation. It could be in the main office, it could be on a pole, hung like lower, right, than the, the United States flag. But I'm not sure that we have that right now. So it might mean we need to order some Washington state flags and figure out where those need to go. So I just point that out as a point of, you know, even it, it, we would probably be out of compliance right away on that point.
If that's the way we.
If that's the way, yeah.
So that's something we can discuss, that's second reading.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks, Pierce, thank you. Uh, okay, new business. We have appointment of a against committee for the bond levy.
Sorry, I lost our folder here real quick. Okay, at the last board meeting, the board went through the process to appoint the pro, the for committee for the levy. And at that time, we had not heard from any individual asking to be appointed to the con committee. After the board meeting, we did hear from an individual and so I'm presenting that for you tonight. Just as a quick reminder, for each ballot measure, the school board shall formally appoint committees for and against the ballot measure. And the board must appoint persons who are known to favor or oppose the ballot measure. We're not, the school district, the board isn't involved in preparing any of those pro or con statements. The board's sole duty is just to appoint the committee members and to provide that information to the elections office. Given the timing of when the, the information needed to go to the elections office, since we were aware of someone who wanted to, you know, be that chair of the con committee, I went ahead and, and gave that information to the elections office. But I still think it's important that the board complete the formal process to appoint the individual. And so the following individual submitted interest in being appointed to write the against statement for the levy. That should just say levy, there's only one levy. This time around for the voter's pamphlet, that is Dallas Burt. The recommendation is that the board appoint Dallas Burt to serve as the committee to write the against statement for the levy. to write the against statement for the levy.
Uh, we have any questions or comments regarding this recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint the following individual to serve as the committee to write the against statement for the levies for the voters, pamphlet, Dallas Burt.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? And I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvik?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes. Okay. Last part of our public meeting here is new business for the semi-annual board retreat. The board will review agenda items for the next board meeting. So this is, what's the meeting agenda? This is for the...
Topics for the...
Oh, topics for the retreat.
For the retreat.
Correct?
That's correct, and so I've been kind of putting some things in my regular communication to the board and just reminding you that that's coming up, and this is what we've got so far. But if there's other, you know, there's still time to add topics to the retreat agenda.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add the voter, the students.
Advisory.
Advisory. I don't know if we need to discuss, I think we all think it's a good idea, but, oh, student advisory vote.
I'd like to discuss it before we determine whether or not.
Okay.
And I have something kind of to add to that. Richland and Pasco both have multiple student reps. And as London learned when she was up there, and as I have over the years, some districts do too. They do a junior and a senior, so that you have some continuity, because you get like almost through your senior year, and you finally figure it out, and then poof, you're gone, and then another person has to start over. Some districts do, you know, Pasco has the two comprehensive high schools, and then they have an at-large, which can come from any of their other high schools. There's multiple ways to do it. But I'd like to look at, at the possibility of either one or the other, but I really like an idea of having a little more continuity for a student to spend more time, especially if we're gonna talk about advisory votes, that they really need to know more of what's going on. So if, I'd like to kind of have some discussion on that.
Perfect. Anything else?
This may be too vague or maybe too soon, but are we looking at school buses, electric school buses, alternate fuel school buses?
Yes, there are grants. I talked to a person at Wasda. Did you talk to that person? I've got it written down here somewhere. But there are grants, Dr. Pierce, do you know which, it's Madawa? Ooh, somewhere over there, Sunnyside, somewhere. Anyway, and they got a major grant through the state, I believe it was, and those grants are continuing to be available.
Okay, that's all. We're going to adjourn the public portion of our meeting. We are going into executive session for how long possibly? Thoughts? Bronson?
I would say approximately 30 minutes for exec session. Yeah, approximately 20 minutes. Approximately 15 minutes.
15 minutes? Okay.
That's cute.
Thank you so much.
I heard somebody said...
That's gonna keep you happy. I'm gonna keep throwing balmy joys at you.
That's, I put those in there too when you're not here. That's why you do this, right?